Okay, City Council is in session. We begin with our invocation. Who has our invocation this morning? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman, it's my pleasure to introduce Mr. Steve McAlini, who is one of the best prayers I've ever heard. He's here today to do a prayer for us. Please rise for the invocation. We remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good morning. Dear Lord, many are called, but few are chosen. When we are called, who answers? It's not always the most pious, the most holy, rather it's the ones who hear the call and listen. We are surrounded by the messages from the Lord, hear them, and act upon them wisely. We cry out to the Lord for salvation when we feel forlorn, and the Lord is there. We ask for hope when all seems lost, and the Lord is there. We ask for strength when we feel weak or ravaged, and the Lord is there. We ask for comfort when we are despaired and lost in the ways of the world, and the Lord is there. We ask for guidance, and the Lord shows us a path. Life is full of challenges, and the challenges manage to make us stronger, wiser, and more convicted. When I was troubled, the Lord was there. When I was frightened, the Lord was there. And when I needed the Lord most, He was there for me and all the others who seek the Lord. The Lord does not withhold love, care, protection, guidance, assistance, or grace. Sing the praises of the Lord and His awesome and mighty deeds. Rejoice in the Lord and give thanks. We ask for your blessings and your shield of hope, for wisdom, faith, that they be bestowed upon your elected officials, your first responders, teachers, our armed forces, governmental servants, and our children. Please keep them safe in your loving arms and provide them for what they need in these challenging times. The good Lord is our rock, our salvation. We give praise and thanks for all of His gifts. We pray this in your holy name, and we ask that you protect all those who may be in danger with a hurricane. Thank you so much, dear Lord. Amen.
To the flag.
Dean Felder.
Here.
Gould.
Here.
Meniskalco.
Here.
Citro.
Here.
Miranda.
Here.
Carlson.
Here.
Vieira.
Here.
Okay, we begin with commendation of Police Officer of the Month and Councilman Citro. And I know that Councilman Citro had asked that before he began if Chief Dugan wanted to say a few words about our forthcoming storm problems and just words of wisdom for public safety.
Thank you, Chair, council members. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a probable storm coming our way, and there's no time like the present to prepare. I know that if you're in a low-lying area that there are sandbags ready to be taken by the public. McFarland Park is one area that has them. Please, let's prepare ourselves. This may not come. This may not hit us, but now is the time to prepare. The mayor, the city council, the police department, the fire department is here to serve and protect. Public safety is number one for the city, number one for the mayor, the city council, and all the employees. Let's also remember to get our medications, not only for our family members, but our best family members, our pets. Let's bring them in during the storm. If you have that yellow placard that the city mailed to you that lets you back into your neighborhood once there are evacuations, please find that yellow placard so that you can get back home and help the police department. Remember, if you are asked to evacuate, please evacuate, because if the storm is that bad, the police department has things that they need to do. Chief Dugan, would you like to say anything about this?
Yes. Good morning, Council. Brian Dugan, Chief of Police. If I could just remind everyone to think back two years ago with Irma, we were very lucky. We dodged a bullet, so to speak. But if you remember the wind damage that we had and power lines and the electricity being out in certain neighborhoods and the struggles that we went through. As you are well aware, that the city has done a tremendous amount when it comes to stormwater and drainage, and they have fixed a lot of the problems, but we all know what areas flood where, areas don't. I always used to joke that if someone left their sprinkler system on overnight in South Tampa, it flooded. Well, now that joke's not going to be so funny when we get flooded. We know where we have our tough areas when it deals with water, so pay attention to that. He mentioned the pets, but let's also not forget our neighbors, especially the elderly. Sometimes they don't always pay attention to the weather, and sometimes they just don't think things through. And so, let's learn from our past. I know at the police department and the city government, we have made adjustments since Irma, but please use some common sense and plan ahead. Where we are very fortunate now with the weather forecast systems, we know about these much sooner than we have in the past. And I don't want people to use that time to rest on their laurels. What I want them to do is use that time to prepare. And so, look at it this way. If we don't get a direct hit, we'll be ready for the next storm.
Thank you, Chief.
And if I may, just briefly, also something just to, especially for council members, just to be, and everybody, to be in contact also with institutions in your community that provide help for people who are lower-income, disabled, seniors, et cetera. I always say that if you are a lower-income or struggling household, a Category 1 storm is for you a Category 4 storm because of your lack of resources. So, what you said, Chief, with regards to your neighbors, especially those who are historically disadvantaged, is something that is true. So, thank you.
One of the facts I did learn from one of our local weathermen, there's only been five, excuse me, three Category 5 hurricanes hit the state of Florida. Cat 5 hurricanes are very rare. Of those three Cat 5 hurricanes that hit the state of Florida, two of them were just tropical storms three days before. Let's prepare ourselves. Let's help the police and the fire protect us. Chief Dugan, we have a Officer of the Month, Ms. Hope Dolphin. I can't express enough, if you want to find out what these women and men do for our city, please go to the Tampa Citizens Police Academy and find out what they actually do for us. Ms. Hope, you have served us well. I would like Chief Dugan to explain the great things that you have done for the citizens of Tampa. Chief?
Thank you. So, this morning, we are honoring Officer Hope Dolphin. She's the Officer of the Month for August of 2019. I'll give you just a little bit of the things that she does. She brings compassion and fairness to her investigations, allowing her to solve crimes and improve the quality of life for the citizens of Tampa. Here are just a few examples of some of the things that she has done. She responded to a call of a man threatening to kill his wife at her job. He took a work truck and said he was going to kill his in-laws in Ocala. His wife advised he owns a shotgun and would kill her or her family. Hope called the subject, and after establishing a rapport with him, he admitted that he was headed to his in-law's house. Hope contacted the Marion County Sheriff's Office, and their deputies arrived at the home before the subject did. Over the phone, Hope kept him calm until he was safely taken into custody under the Baker Act. She saved that family's life, and Lord knows what else would have happened. Hope's investigated lawn equipment theft from a lawn business. Within three hours, she located that equipment at a pawn shop. The victim responded to identify it, and she talked the suspect into meeting her with her later, and he confessed to the crime and was arrested. Recently, she worked with the D-2 detective squad and was assigned various theft cases that had little or no leads. Two cellphone theft reports stood out to her. She sent out a crime alert bulletin to neighboring jurisdictions. Pinellas and Hillsborough Counties advised us that they had similar cases. They met to review the intelligence and found three suspects with the same physical description and clothing who had committed similar thefts. She sent out a statewide bulletin, leading to the same three suspects having committed thefts in multiple counties throughout the state of Florida. She found their social media accounts and monitored their activity, but did not have names for them. She got a break in the case when a suspect car and tag from Melbourne Police came back to a local car rental business in Tampa. She coordinated with the rental car company and set up surveillance when the car was to be returned. Once the car was returned, she processed it for fingerprints and identified the two suspects. The investigation uncovered 38 cases in 20 jurisdictions and accounting for nearly $100,000 in stolen property. This all started off with the theft of some cellphones. After coordinating with Florida Department of Law Enforcement, the two main suspects were arrested at a T-Mobile store in Melbourne, wearing the same clothes they wore during previous thefts. The state prosecutor is pursuing RICO charges against these offenders. She also spends her off-duty time doing volunteer work, and on-duty time organized toy and food drives for families in need. She set up community movie nights and is known as Officer Hopes from her time coordinating in The Rich House, a nonprofit that serves at-risk kids in underprivileged areas in Tampa. In recognition of her outstanding work and dedication to duty, Officer Hope Dolphin has been selected as Officer of the Month for August 2019. Congratulations.
Morning, City Council. April Larson with the PVA. I just wanted to thank you guys for recognizing our officers monthly and to the staff for everything that you guys do in recognition of us. I want to congratulate Hope. I actually worked with her just a couple months ago back there in the Detective Division. She was also very pregnant while investigating this very lengthy investigation, and I know that was a lot on her, but that is a testament to the intelligent investigator that she is and how dedicated of an officer she is. So, we truly appreciate it as a token of our appreciation for you.
Morning, Council. Dan Matthews, Chief of Safety and Security for the Strass Center in downtown Tampa. On behalf of the Strass Center Officer Dolphin, job well done. Two tickets to Charlie and the Chocolate Factory.
Morning, Council. Mike MacArthur, Steps Towing Service. I want to start off with, I had the opportunity to witness your staff yesterday on a crime ride outside one of our locations, and I can tell you, when I pulled up there, hats off to you guys, I mean, it's unbelievable, the response and the ability that you guys have to do the things that you do, and it was very, very assuring to me to knowing that you guys are on our side and taking care of things. On behalf of Steps Towing Service and Todd Step, we'd like to present you with a dinner out at Olive Garden to us and a night out in our company limousine. Job well done. Take some time off.
Good morning, Mary Lou Bailey. I'm here on behalf of the Zoo Tampa. I serve as a volunteer as the Chair of the Board there, and the volunteers who are also on the board with me have bought you a family membership to the zoo. So, we hope you enjoy it and good health and fun, and it enriches your love of animals like I have. It also includes attendance at our seasonal events, so like Zouboo and Christmas in the Wild and things like that, so we hope you enjoy it. And I wanted to thank you for your service. I did go to the Citizens Police Academy that Mr. Citro talked about, so I have a little glimpse of what you guys go through, and you're all awesome. So, thank you. Congratulations.
Council, Chief, Officer Tom Rowan, Tampa Bay Buccaneers. On behalf of the Tampa Bay Buccaneers, I'd like to present you with this game ball, and thank you for your outstanding dedication to service to our community. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Council. Pete Brevi, Busch Gardens, Tampa Bay. As I always say, thank you for your continued
As I always say, thank you for your continued support of the monthly event to honor the Police Officer of the Month of the City of Tampa, and thank you for allowing us to be a continued part of that process. I actually had the opportunity to deal with Hope earlier this year as part of what the chief spoke about is, you know, she coordinated to bring the children from the Rich House to Busch Gardens, to spend a day at Busch Gardens and a day at Adventure Island. And if you listen to the citation that chief read, there's two things that are clearly evident, that not only is she a great police officer, but I think it's clearly evident that she's probably a better human being. So, Hope, on behalf of Busch Gardens and Stuart Clark and our 4,000 employees, I'd like to offer you tickets to our park, and thank you for what you do.
Thank you, Pete. You're welcome.
Good morning, I'm Lisa with the Doubletree Tampa Airport. Thank you for all you do. We have a two-night stay for you and breakfast for two, and of course, a 10 of our Doubletree cookies.
Good morning, Council Leah Van Neen from Tampa Theater. Officer, thank you so much for your service in our community. I'm honored, on behalf of Tampa Theater, to give you the gift of a membership so you can come and visit us in Franklin Street.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Good morning, Council Michael Kilgore with the Columbia Restaurant Group. On behalf of the Gonsmart family, it's owned the Columbia for almost 115 years, have a gift card for $115 to any of our restaurants.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for your service.
Good morning, City Council Dustin Portillo, Bob Canigliero with Casper's Company McDonald's Restaurants. First of all, I don't know why you would commit a crime, and second of all, why would you commit a crime when you live in that city? Because you are amazing, and we appreciate what you do. Here is a little fry bag. There's not fries in it, but there's some goodies in there for you, and we just appreciate what you guys do. Thank you, Dugan. You guys are just incredible, and we really appreciate everything you do.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Good morning, Council Brian Ramirez of Tampa Expressway. Officer Hopes, congratulations on your achievement today. This is tokens of appreciation, some goodie bag and gift card for Applebee's here.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, and congratulations.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Good morning, Steve Stickley, representing Crockett's Towing and Guardian Fleet Services. On behalf of Crockett's and Guardian, we'd really appreciate what you've done for us, and we have a few items in this gift bag for you and gift card to Bed Bath &amp; Beyond. We'd like to go pamper yourself a little bit, and if we can help you in any way with your charities, my cards in there, please reach out to us, and we'd be honored to help you out with that.
Wonderful, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
I think you're going to need a forecliff. Congratulations, Steve Michelini. On behalf of a couple of different folks, we'd like to honor you. One is a photographic package from Prestige Photos. You can have your family pictures taken. The other is from the Chichos Restaurant Group. Enjoy yourself at breakfast, lunch, or dinner. Yummy House China Bistro, and all the officers like to go there, so I think you're going to find some friends for that one. And the new restaurant in Hyde Park for Beachy, and a gift certificate to a membership in the Tampa Y.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Officer Dolphin, we thank you for the service that you give to the citizens of Tampa, and we thank you so much for everything that you do. Now, your job is difficult, but if it wasn't for your family to help you support, would you like to recognize them or have them or bring them up?
Yes, please.
Come on, bring that beautiful baby up here. Why don't you go ahead and recognize?
Well, first, I'd like to just thank the chief and city council for recognizing Officer of the Month. It means so much, and especially the community members who were so gracious today to come and gift us these beautiful gifts for my family. And yes, we have a new addition to our family, but I wouldn't be here today if it weren't for my wonderful husband and my parents, who have instilled a strong work ethic, but also taught me that people come first over all else. And so, I try to live by that, but I also have an incredible group of supervisors and especially a sergeant, who, when I come up with these ideas of projects I want to do, they support me 100% and encourage me to think, you know, outside the box and push myself to learn new things. So, without all of these people, I wouldn't be here today. So, thank you.
No, of course. Council's going to have some comments for you?
Any comments from City Council? Thank you, oh, Councilman.
Officer, congratulations. I've stated that poem a couple of times, I know how you must feel this time. Congratulations for you and your family.
Thank you.
And congratulations, and thank you so much for your work, and as has been said directly and indirectly by you and others, you know, your husband and your child, et cetera, those are people who always take the journey with you every day to work. Every time that you go out to work, you know that there's always that possibility of danger to you and yourself, and so, that's the journey that you always take with your family and loved ones. So, we thank your husband and all your family for all your sacrifice to our city and protecting all of us. And especially, we're aware right now with storms coming, that our first responders are always the first line of defense for that, and we're aware of that. So, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon.
Okay, next, Councilman Goode, if you want to wait 20 seconds, that's all right.
Good morning, Council. Mr. Chair, this morning, if I could have the Tampa Bay chapter of the National Association of Black Nurses come on. Mr. Chairman, you just saw the police leave out the room, and I can tell you, as a police officer, you know, we always look to make sure that those who take care of us, we don't upset them. Give them a tick, you know, doing something, and then you get that hot little, I remember you say, "Don't take care of me now." So, I always, you know, love to see, I've seen the work you've done in our community. You've never been recognized for what you've done. You come out, you give these immunizations, you educate our communities, especially black communities. And I do these things, not just to recognize those who've been doing things, because some of those people I've been recognizing and recognizing, but I look at those who have not been recognized for the work they put in. And I can say, I know, I see you all the time, you're putting in the work. So, this morning, I felt that we had to recognize this group, and let me just tell you what we want to say about you, because you guys are doing a great job in our community. The National Black Nurses Association, NBAN, was organized in 1971, under the leadership of Dr. Lorraine Sands, former dean and professor of nursing, School of Nursing, Tuskegee University, Tuskegee, Alabama. NBA is a nonprofit organization incorporated on September 2nd, 1972, in the state of Ohio. The NBA presents over 150,000 African-American registered nurses in at least 35 states. That's fabulous. The National Black Nurses Association mission is to represent and provide a forum of black nurses to advocate and implement strategies to ensure access to the highest quality of healthcare for persons of color. Since its inception, providing the health of the African-American through the provisions of culturally competent healthcare services and community-based health programs has been the cornerstone of the National Black Nurses Association. My aide always says, "I have to do both." She says, "Just don't need to come, read the letters and votes."
Yes.
So, I gotta pay attention. So, here we go. Presented the Tampa chapter of the National Black Nurses Association in honor of your commitment to the health and welfare of the underserved and the disadvantaged populations, the Tampa City Council applauds the efforts of the Tampa chapter of National Black Nurses Association. This commendation is presented to recognize the efforts of the Tampa Bay Black Nurses Association toward accessible and affordable healthcare via advocacy, education, health screening, and preventive care. Since its introduction into the national organization in 1988, the Tampa chapter of NBA has tirelessly served the Tampa community with programs such as health fairs, forums, and walks aimed toward everything from HIV and breast cancer awareness to domestic violence and human trafficking prevention. In gratitude to the service of the Tampa Bay Black Nurses Association, the Tampa City Council presents this commendation on the 29th day of August. We thank you for your service.
Thank you. It is indeed an honor to stand before you with my support group. We could not do it without the community. Collaboration is our key, and we have been in the community before the Tampa Health Clinics and things came about, serving the community with preventive care. We have sent many people to the emergency room for my healthcare events, and we've done much counseling, and we really care about Tampa, and we are entwined, and if you ask anybody, especially in the East Tampa area, about black nurses, they will know who we are. Even in the parade, when we're in the parade, we get all the accolades, and I happen to have been the president of National Council Negro Women, and I was in the parade representing them, and as we passed by, it wasn't National Council, it was "Black Nurses, we see you." So, it has been a journey, and we have been entwined, as I say, in the community, and without the support of the nurses giving their time. We used to do two and three health fairs a weekend, but when the Tampa Care Clinics and what have you came about, it helped to calm a lot of the problems down in our community. But we are here for the community, we care about the community, and it is indeed an honor to have a time like this to stop, because that's what keep me keeping them coming for us when, you know, they don't ask for the recognition, but I think they deserve it. So, we just applaud you this morning, and thank you all for the work that you do in our city. Without you making the decisions that are good for each and every one of our citizens, we could not stand in the community. Thank you.
Council members? Well, oh, Councilman, oh, sorry, were you going to say something?
Go ahead.
No, please, I have to, I typically go last.
And I'm gathering my words. Ladies, you are the unsung heroes in the medical profession. Doctors get all the credits, but you're the one that is actually helping the patients, and I thank you so much. After my last experience in the hospital, I love nurses, and I thank you very, very much, ladies.
Thank you very much, and Councilman Goode, good job on this. You know, I've, council members always have historically different perspectives on commendations when you recognize people, and I believe that something that council members have, we should recognize those who are often ignored and not recognized, and this is a perfect example of that, where you've got an organization started in 1971 to recognize the hard work of our African-American nurses. And I think that this organization gets down to one word, which is respect, that y'all just want basic, common courtesy and respect. Respect from doctors, respect from patients, respect for your pay, respect for the work that you do, respect for, I mean, y'all have got nurses out there that have been nurses for 20, 30, 40 years, 40 years of looking after patients, looking after all of us who have been in hospitals. All of us were born from moms who were cared after by nurses. So, you know, that's what it's all about, which is respect, and so, today, we show our respect to you. So, thank you very much, and God bless you guys for all the work that you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Council, I had, I believe, sent out a memo on this. We had originally planned today to do a commendation for the Foot Foundation, and I had inadvertently not done a motion for it, so with the, I guess, courtesy of my colleagues, I wanted to do a, I guess, a commendation, if I may, for the Foot Foundation. Any objection? I would assume not, but just making sure. Thank you very much. Today, we are here at Tampa City Council here to honor the Foot Foundation. We have various individuals coming up here from the Foot Foundation, including Mr. Dino Scannio, who is here, along with other members of the Foot Foundation and supporters, including Father Ken Mally with St. Timothy's Church. And Father, it's a pleasure to have you, sir, here today. We're here to recognize the hard work of everybody with the Foot Foundation, an organization that works really, really hard to provide assistance for prosthetic-type services throughout Latin America. This is an organization whose leadership does this, not only because of their personal experiences and their compassion, but also because of their faith in action. This is a charity, and looked at some ways, a ministry, that reaches out to folks in Latin America who need assistance with basic prosthetic services. When you take a look at Latin America, you have a part of the world that suffers often, always actually, from not just poverty, which is always a crisis and always a moral issue and a moral challenge, but extreme poverty, where people don't often have homes, people suffer from day-to-day hunger. Up to 10% of folks in Latin America suffer from what is classified as extreme poverty, and this organization makes robust local efforts, done by Tampa natives, done by folks who are here from this city. And the Scannio family, for them, this is something that is very personal to their hearts, as their son in 2012 was diagnosed with mitochondrial disease, and so, this is something that they know about from their heart. And often, we see a lot of these local organizations that start here in Tampa and cities across the country, because somebody has been touched by an issue that affects them personally. So, once they're touched by that, once they suffer through that trauma, they pick themselves up, and then they go help people who are suffering from the same or similar circumstances, and that is what the Foot Foundation has done. So, for that and so much more, it is our pleasure and our honor here at Tampa City Council to recognize our friend from the Foot Foundation with a Tampa City Council commendation. If you want to say a word or two, sir, you may.
Thank you so much, council members, for allowing me to be here during this wonderful honor. The Foot Foundation has a vast reach over the community, also, not just in Latin America. I'm honored to say that when my wife and I started this 13 years ago, we never envisioned that we would have improved the lives of children in Latin America. We're getting ready to celebrate close to 1,000 children, that we have helped defy the odds through orthotics and prosthetics. But it does not stop there. Here in Tampa, being a third-generation native to Tampa, which is rare these days, we have reached over 12 local charities that also fly under the radar that need assistance from our foundation. In addition to that, we're getting ready to launch a domestic violence campaign starting on Giving Tuesday, December 13th. As we continue to improve lives locally, we are also reaching out on educational campaigns, as mentioned by Councilor, on mitochondrial disease. I am honored to say that we have provided over eight different educational experiences on mitochondrial myopathy and the diseases that fall under that umbrella. We are in the middle of working on launching a camp for children with mitochondrial disease out of Orlando. We continue to look at how we can improve the community. I've had such a great partnership and member of St. Timothy's. We've launched a special needs ministry out of St. Timothy's also for children and adults with disabilities. The one thing that I try to live by is that it's service before self. Making a difference does not mean that we have to jump on a plane and fly abroad and start clinics like I did. Making a difference is as simple as listening to someone, shaking someone's hand, or giving a hug. What we do, what I do, we do as a team, and together, everyone in this room and all those that have left, we all make a difference in this community. I am no better than any one of you here or any of you up there. We are all the same, and we can all improve lives, no matter where we are in our own life. Thank you for this distinct honor and privilege.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Hold. Thank you, guys. Thank you, sir.
Council members?
Thank you.
Any questions? No?
Thank you very much for that. Okay, next, we move onward to public comment. If anyone is here to public
If anyone is here to public, to comment about any item on the agenda excluding, including, excluding, excuse me, matters for workshop, please come forward, three minutes a person.
Not, not including the workshop.
Excluding the workshop.
Not including the budget workshop.
Yes, yes, workshops. If you're here to comment on an item that is not going to be workshop, please come forward. If you're going to comment on a workshop, that comes after the particular workshop. So go ahead.
Huru. Huru means freedom in Swahili. And we people who are involved, we Africans and other people, North Americans and others, internationally, when we meet, greet, and depart, we say huru. And that means we, as African people, should always be thinking about our freedom. I was here last week, and somebody made a comment, one of the individuals up there made a comment of someone writing in a letter or someone making a comment about how people speak and their demeanor and all this other stuff. But we think it's the same thing, it's the same path Bob Buckhorn was on, making stupid statements to the St. Pete Times, which is an attempt to inspire people, faceless individuals and baseless individuals, to attack and do physical harm to individuals, to African people who stand up for our rights. It's a slick way. If someone called in your office or if someone writing a letter, tell them, "Brain that, A S S, right down here," just like we do to people who take the time out of our schedule to take our three minutes and have our three minutes to express the way we feel, the way our community feel, the way our community said. And people do and say stupid things, and when it's African people, when you're dealing with the black, you want it to go over our heads and think, "Oh, we didn't catch that." It's the same statement Joe Biden's making. What if Obama had been assassinated? Oh, yeah, that would have put you right in that seat right now, wouldn't it? When y'all deal with African people, y'all think we're stupid, you think we're ignorant. It's just like the castle man came up here and said, "Who would want to commit a crime? Why would they even want to commit a crime?" That might be nice to say in your cushy job, but McDonald's committing crimes every day, that bad nasty food is serving people that's giving them heart disease and everything else. But people want to say things and get it over people's heads and think they're being smart, but no, it's really being dumb. We African people come down here, and we speak for our rights, we speak for our communities, we speak for the injustices that we experience. Every single day, we live it, we feel it. Our mothers and fathers have felt it for hundreds of years, for 600 years. Our children are feeling it, our grandchildren are going to be feeling it, and our great-grandchildren are going to be feeling it. And we try to come down here for three minutes and speak on it, and people try to be smart and send out and code, "Oh, no, you should do some harm or some injury to that person." That's disingenuous of anybody who think that goes over African people, had it, don't. 165 years this city's been an organization, and a billion-dollar budget it has right now, and black people don't get one damn thing out of it, nothing. And y'all want us to shut up and be smiling and whatever. No, black people's not going to shut up no more. We want services, we want part of this budget, and we want reparations. That's the word, reparations.
Thank you very much, sir. Next, please.
Just to be clear, we can't speak on the budget right now, correct?
No, ma'am. That'll be after the workshop.
Okay.
Thank you. And Ms. Gonzalez, were you up in line, or?
Yes, sir.
Okay, sorry, I didn't see.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Alma Gonzalez Buenos dias. I have the privilege of traveling all over the world, and I'm so grateful to know that we have amazing gentlemen that represent us in Tampa Bay. I am one of the greatest ambassadors for this city, talking about how important it is and how incredibly well-represented we are, in particular, inviting people to come and enjoy the arts and culture of this particular community. I know that later today, you'll be in workshop talking about the budget. I unfortunately have a day job, and I do have to go to that job, Mr. Chair, but I wanted to encourage you all to continue.
And let me just stop for a second, if I may. And I have, if you, and let me amend my prior remarks. If you are unable to come for the budget explicitly, which is probably going to be at about 1:00, and you want to comment on it at this time, you may do so now. For example, Ms. Gonzalez, you're not able to come later on for the budget workshop?
That's correct, sir.
Okay, then you may proceed. That's fine. I'll make that exception.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your indulgence, Mr. Chair. I did want to speak to you today about the importance of the TBAE budget in your consideration. And one of the great things about this city council, and one of the reasons that I supported each and every one of you in being elected, is because of your vision of growing this city into the world-class city that it is. When we travel around the country and we travel around the world, our name is becoming synonymous with a really cool place to be. And part of the reason that that's true is because of the investment that this organization, that this council makes in organizations like TBAE. I want to encourage you to continue to do that and to invest wisely and greatly in this amazing organization. Again, thank you for all you do, and much appreciated.
Thank you very much. And I see other folks probably standing up for the budget under my recent exception that I made. I would ask that you do also what Ms. Gonzalez did, which is she didn't take up her full three minutes, just so as to not be repetitive. I do that because we have a couple of police officers who are here for the Bush workshop, and they have issues involving our forthcoming storm to deal with, and I just want to make sure to respect their time. So again, I will carve out that exception, but let's just be wise with our time. Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you very much. My name is Peter Frank Williams, located at 1112 East Scott Street, right here in the city of Tampa, Florida. I get no respect, but I definitely have to make sure that we all should respect God Almighty regardless. I'm going to read some scripture to you from the Book of Romans. I know a lot of you all probably don't read your Bible, but I'll read it to you. What shall we then say to these things? If God be for us, who can be against us? He that spared not his own son, but delivered him up for us all. How shall he not, with him, also freely give us all things? Who shall lay anything against God's charges? It is God to justify. Who is he that condemns? It is Christ that died, ye reveth and risen again. Who is even at the right hand of God, who also make an intercession for us? Who shall separate us from the love of God in Christ Jesus? Shall tribulation, or distress, or persecution, or famine, or nakedness, or pearl, or sword, as it is written, for thy sake we are killed all the day long, we are counted as cheap for the slaughter; nay, in all these things we are more than conquer through him that love us. For I am persuaded that neither death, nor life, nor angel, nor principality, nor power, nor thing present, nor thing to come, nor height, nor death, nor any other creature shall be able to separate us from the love of God, which is in Christ Jesus, our Lord and Savior. I have one question I want to ask you all. I know you all probably won't give me the correct answer, but why do we celebrate Labor Day? And when was this inspired, Labor Day? And also, who was the president during that time, Labor Day? If any of you all can explain to me what the purpose of Labor Day, please do. Nobody seemed to know. But yet, we go to the beach, cook barbecues, collard greens, and all that good stuff, but nobody can tell me what Labor Day. So I'm going to tell you all to Google it and see what it says. And when you Google it and see what it says, it still will give you a good answer. We should be celebrating Jesus Christ Day. Amen. Amen, and God bless all of you.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
Some of you may know me. I'm John Maul, I'm a water harvester. Live at 4104 North Lynn Avenue. It's been a family farm since my grandfather bought it in 1908. And I have some issues with mitigation credit. I've been trying for about three years to get that, and the last time I was here, I tried to read, but three minutes is not very much time. So I just want to go over this with you. This was in lieu of appearance. Apparently, now, the instructions to staffers, they come and discuss it, but before, that wasn't the case. So it says here that the determination of eligibility, that's what they're determining on me, to award a mitigation credit is an administrative decision based on demonstration that a property issue does not receive the benefits afforded by the city's stormwater system. I contain all the water that falls on my property and have for 100 years. So I don't believe, like, in the next sentence, as the stormwater assessments are user chargers. Well, if you're not a user, why are you charged? I am not a user of the drainage system that is supposed to drains people's property. But anybody here can come out to, and I can demonstrate to you, that I have a stormwater pond in my backyard where the water from my roof goes. It does not go into the street or any ditch. So, and it says, there are no exceptions. I live on a corner lot, half of it is West North Bay Street, just go a few houses down, and there's an L L C that has about an acre down there that doesn't pay one cent. So how does he get the exemption when I have to pay? So there are things that I think should be different on here. I see up here that it says the officer of the city attorney in Salvatore, Terrarito, city attorney, I think that's been changed to Gina Grimes now, if I'm not mistaken. And the last time I was here, Mr. Martin said that you could not speak to me at all because I had a lawyer sitting with me. Well, I don't think that precludes me obviously from speaking to you, and I'm here to discuss any of this with you if you feel so inclined. Attorneys, sometimes attorneys have different opinions, and my attorney said that if any of you felt free to discuss this with me or speak to me, you could do so. But perhaps Mr. Martin disagrees. That was just the first paragraph. I'm preparing, or with my lawyer, a response to this memorandum. It's not prepared yet, so when that comes, I'll try to read that to you, and I'll just start on the second paragraph and see how far I get. In this particular instance, the property issue is owned by the malls. The assertion is that various constructions.
Thank you very much, sir. Next, please.
Thank you all.
My name is Verleen. I come today with some good news. Being that I've been coming here speaking, that means someone has been listening, whether it's the city council or the county commissioner on Wednesday, because I tried to meet all. On Thursday's, when I'm not actually here, I'm trying to get to a food bank, because I do receive less than $30 in food stamps in my fixed income. Some of the problems I've been talking about with the apartment, some issues are being addressed, and I thank you again. Like I say, somebody here is listening, and I thank you. I'm still having some issues, but I will continue to come down and express. I don't like the idea that I'm being labeled as some type of mental person because I do this sometimes, when I speak, when I'm upset. So I don't know, maybe some people are not used to brown people, or when you're angry, upset, that's sometime you do that. But if I don't bring it to you and I'm being violent, that's, I'm not that person. I'm for myself, and I'm also for the everyday people here in Tampa. I grew up and I was raised here. Tampa General, back in the day when I was in high school in 1900s, I used to make $3.33. So I'm on this fixed income today in the 21st century. I'm trying to find out where is the affordable housing for the real, real poor people. Because the existing conditions right now, they're not livable for anybody. So again, I want to thank for whoever is listening, let's continue to listen, and I will continue to keep you updated, so we can keep an eye on all of these nonprofit organizations and the profit organizations who are addressing these housing issues. And again, I want to thank the city and the county, and y'all enjoy the rest of your day.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, please.
Good morning. My name is Bishop Michelle B. Patty. I'd like to first thank you, Chair, for recognizing us in these few minutes. I want to remind those of you that campaign, that you made some campaign promises, you made some campaign awareness, that you noticed that West Tampa and East Tampa has been long neglected. Counsel, this is your only chance to really do something to help the community. You only get one bite at the apple, and it's here now with the budget. I'm going to ask this council, do not agree to spend $100,000 on a survey, because you do have a contract administration department which house engineers. So what you should do is ask the engineers what's going on at these pools. Anybody that's wanting to work on these pools, they will give you a, they would go out and look at it, they would bid, they would tell you what's wrong. We don't need to spend $100,000 for, once again, another survey. So we're going to ask this council to remember your promises, your campaign slogan. You know that East Tampa is neglected. I don't have to beat you to death to say it, but we're asking that this council, that you be the strong leadership that we think you're going to be, that we thought you were, and that's why we voted for you all. Please, look at that budget and do what you said you would do. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, please. And again, if you're speaking on the budget because you are unable to be here later today, the gentleman in the hat of the side that won the Civil War, thank you, sir, is, I believe, going to be the last speaker, so go ahead.
Good morning. I'm Jennifer Willman. I'm the president of the Palmetto Beach Community Association. My address is 2426 Stewart Street. Palmetto Beach Community has been waiting for the Bermuda Boulevard seawall improvements project for many years. It was in prior budgets, but it has been removed for the 2020 budget, because it was actually moved to the project list to receive funding through the All for Transportation Surtax. And while that's being held up in the courts, the county commission will be considering an ordinance to uphold the priorities that we voted on in November to make policy. And one of those funding categories or priorities was the maintenance and vulnerability category, which the Bermuda Boulevard seawall improvements falls under. So that county commission ordinance will be heard on September 5th at 9:00 a.m. It's the same time you will be considering the project list for All for Transportation funding, which the Bermuda Boulevard seawall improvements project will be on. So it's really critical that that project list be approved by you, and it's also very critical that the county commission ordinance to uphold the All for Transportation priorities be approved on September 5th, because Palmetto Beach really needs the Bermuda Boulevard seawall improvements project.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselman, if you would, let's be brief, because we're going before the budget time, so.
Yeah, my question's not about money. Jennifer, thanks for bringing this to our attention again, as you have in the past. I'm just wondering, from an environmental perspective, I thought that we're trying to get away from seawalls, per se, and go into more graduated slopes and riprap and that sort of thing that can foster mangroves and all. Has the city and the community looked at that and addressed that as an alternative?
That was the original design that was proposed a few years ago. The issue with that was because of the property owners owning part of that submerged land, it was difficult to obtain the rights to the land for the city to make those types of improvements. Plus, there were concerns about trash being collected in that riprap, the slope. So what we were hoping is that it could be similar to what it is now, which is that straight, you know, a wall, first, not the riprap, a straight-down wall, which would be incorporated into a trail, which is in the green artery and the trail's plan, the trail along Bermuda Boulevard, it could be incorporated as part of.
I mean, I think environmentally, it's better to have that riprap, but you're right, over here on the river, we have an area that's really nice and growing a lot of mangroves, but it does accumulate a lot of trash. All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am. Next, please.
Good morning, counsel. My name is George San Maria, and thank you for giving me this time. I will not be available during the budget workshop. So I am a student at USF and a former intern at Tampa Bay Arts and Education Network, and I began the internship at the beginning of the summer in May, and I was not really sure what to expect, had zero job experience, and I was unprepared to begin working when I graduate in the spring. And during my time there, I have received training in a real studio on location shoots. We spent a lot of time at the Tampa Tiger Bay Club, and I can't thank them enough for everything that they've done for me. everything that they've done for me. Since I interned there, they have now picked me up as a part-time employee, and I have been in the presence of some of the kindest and most meaningful people in my life. And I am incredibly, incredibly grateful for this opportunity that they've given me, and I am respectfully asking that our funding be restored, and just so that we could continue providing quality programming as well as valuable experience for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Good morning, Councilman. As, I'm also a student at USF and a previous intern with TBAE. I also won't be available later-
Oh, I'm sorry, ma'am. Can you give us your name, please?
Jessica Barron.
Thank you, ma'am. Go ahead.
I'm a graduate student at USF, studying media studies. A year ago, I joined the TBAE family as a production intern, and honestly, it changed my life. It changed my life because it gave me something that I hadn't had before, and that was an opportunity. This chance to work in professional media setting, learning new camera equipment, this is all things that unfortunately, not on, on USF's part, but you know, I haven't had that opportunity to work with current technology, because USF just sadly doesn't offer that at the moment. I know I speak on behalf of other students who have interned, that any student trying to break into the media world could tell you just how hard it can be, especially here in Tampa. That's when organizations such as TBAE is extremely important for students. Internship program gives students the experience they need to be able to get a job after they graduate. This past, when I first started, there, a year ago, there was only, I was one out of three interns, and the intern program has continuously been growing. This past summer, they had eight interns, and all of those interns I know could say that they got into skills where they can continue on and get a new job somewhere else after they graduate. Every single day, I've come into TBAE, I've gotten to do different things and learn new experiences. I've even gotten to cover the Tampa Tiger Bay Forum, where I've met some of you all there, and it's honestly been a life-changing experience. Once again, a year ago, I began to intern, but now I'm also grateful to be able to say that I'm a part-time worker as a media communications coordinator at TBAE. I can finally say that I made it, and here at TBAE, it has helped me and other students become the media professionals that we've always wanted to be. TBAE, this is why TBAE is so important. TBAE needs to be here, because they have become a crucial program for students in the Tampa community. And if you don't support TBAE, it's honestly saying that you don't support the students trying to work in media. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, please.
She looks familiar.
Hi. I'm Sally Harris, and I'm here on behalf of TBAE. I appreciate the opportunity, excuse me, to speak early. I'm actually having minor surgery at eleven o'clock. If Tampa is serious about being the next great city, which I feel we are strongly in the power of being, we have to embrace technology. If we have a strong technology network, we can watch our steam move ahead and move us to the top of networking and technology. As this award, which TBAE was given because of the steam program that they represent and build around the community and support, they, this community is known for embracing and supporting our small businesses. As a small business owner myself, I know how important the community and your support is. TBAE is one of our longstanding small businesses that need our support as a community. I'm asking you to give them your consideration while building your budget, so that we can include funding for their ability to continue the fine work that they do in the community and spreading technology around our area. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am, and good luck today. We mean that. Thank you.
Thank you for your service, Ms. Sal.
Good afternoon, Council. My name is David Lavery, and unlike some of the other supporters for TBAE, I am a film and media arts major at the University of Tampa. Over the summer, I was fortunate enough to intern with the, with Visit Tampa Bay through their Film Tampa Bay Organization, Tyler Martin Olich with the Film Commission. And with TBAE, the fantastic thing that they do is they help to ferment local support for local productions. They help introduce local kids to media, filmmaking, television production, and it spurs interest in media creation across the area. Through my work with the Film Commission, I can say with certainty that over the summer, the Commission had received a record number of permits, permit requests for television shows, films, short films that wanted to be filmed in our city, and it is only increasing by the month. By increasing the budget for TBAE, you guys will be helping to ferment local productions in the area, which will only increase the amount of outside productions that want to come to the city to spend money in local businesses in our, in our community. I thank you for the time to speak. I have class. Have a good day.
Good luck. Next, please.
Good morning. My name is Ernest Johnson, and I represent the Florida Right Restoration Coalition in the East Tampa community development, and we're concerned about the housing in East Tampa. We also recognize that the Florida Department Law Office just put out a report that in the last several years, Hillsborough County has sent more people to prison in this state in all six, seven counties, out of all the six, seven counties. And when they return from prison, we're trying to, the FRC, trying to see if the city can find something in their budget to find some form of housing for people returning from prison. Because to give a man fifty bucks and, and send him out the door, you're setting him up for failure. Because now he has the stigma, he's an ex-felon, I can't rent your apartment. You're an ex-felon, I can't hire you, and all these things. We want the city to just bring the conversation about. I just look at the July first, one billion dollar budget for the city of Tampa, there's nothing there for returning citizens, not one dime. And I just want the council to try to come up with some solution for some housing for people just leaving prison, because most people leave prison are suffering from post-traumatic syndrome. They need housing, and they need medical attention, mental health. And I just want the city to just to talk about it, discuss it, to find some form of dollars and put it together for that, that means. Because to let a guy out of prison with fifty bucks, seventy-five, a hundred, well, you just set him up for failure. Most of these guys return to prison because they have nowhere to stay. Their mentality don't allow them to stay with their mother and their father and their wives and ex-wives and stuff like that, and that syndrome they're suffering from. So I'm asking that the city find something in their budget, since you, Hillsborough County, send more people to prison out of all the other sixty-seven counties, find something for them in terms of housing. If it's just six months or a year in public housing, until they can find them a McDonald's job or something, sustain their living condition. Because it's not fair in a democracy to take a man's freedom despite his crimes, strip him of his, his sanity in prison, and put him back out there on the street, inspect some kind of positive influence. We did not oppose the sheriff in the last election last year, because we see where he's done nothing, you know, against the community, against law, or, or law enforcement to the community. We seen where he was just. Give him something to fight with in terms of looking into this situation with mental health and housing for ex-felons, because this revolving door starts with somewhere to stay. If you don't have somewhere to stay, most of these guys return to the street, because they're not going to sit there and live in the bushes and, and all of this kind of stuff. And we just want you, the City Council, to find some kind of dollars just to, to put exploratory committee for that.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it. And as always, tell you, I love your hat.
Yes, I represent Buffalo, so-
There you go. Amen. I'm, go ahead, sir.
Sir, sir, just, just to let you know, I did ask for a workshop, a little on the twenty-fourth. Ms. Shelby, there will be a rear-entry ordinance workshop that I've made a motion, it was seconded, for staff to bring back information. That'd be a time for the community also to put their input as well, but I am looking into that, not just for prisoners, but for small, slight crimes, housing, a lot of the issues that I want to discuss on that day. But thank you for coming forward.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Councilman. Okay, next, we move forward to item number three, which is our Bush Boulevard workshop. And I know we have various individuals here from various departments. I guess I'm going to ask our friends with TPD to please come forward, and first, I guess, if you would, for your first reports. I know you all are very busy the next few days, so. But I believe we have here to speak, we have Sal here with Code Enforcement, we have Jean here with Transportation. I know we have the Innovation Alliance here, and I see our former colleague Lisa Monteleone here from the Terrace Park Neighborhood Association. We'll be hearing from folks later, but go ahead. Thank you.
Morning, Council. Sal Rigerio, Code Enforcement. I just want to lay out some of the, the things that we're doing on, on that Bush Boulevard corridor between like Nebraska and Thirtieth Street. We're keeping a close eye, along with TPD, we work together and everything, as far as, there's four hotels that we kind of concentrate on. The La Quinta Inn, which is fairly new, but they have issues. The Garden View, which is at twenty-five hundred East Bush. Sunset Inn at twenty-one oh six East Bush, and the Economy Inn at eighteen-ten East Bush. Weekly, the inspector in that area drives through, does any issues, there's citations issued. They have weekly conversations with the management of these four establishments. They seem to be on board, we're trying to do the right thing. When they get a citation, they take care of it quickly, whatever it is, paint, remove some accumulations, anything like that. There is an illegal dumping issue in the area that we address, along with TPD. We've trained the inspectors to go through the, the stuff that's dumped, to try to find some leads, been successful in some cases where they find an envelope with an address or something to follow up on. But we also have a truck in the area that is on patrol for illegal dumping, so we remove it too, because we know the importance of that. One of the big items that's on Bush Boulevard right now is twenty-ten East Bush. It's a vacant furniture store that's, windows are being broken out of it, homeless are starting to take over. There's a multitude of issues associated with that building that could, that could project crime problems. We, my, my inspectors conducted an investigation on that building, and we determined that it, it meets the demolition criteria, and we're moving forward with a demolition on that building. That investigation is in certain stages, but it should be completed by September twenty-second. The, the, the cost of the demolition for that building is one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that the city will have to expend, but it's my opinion that that's one of the crux of the problem on Bush, and that building needs to go, and we're going to move forward with that. Going a little bit east of there, you have some auto repair shops that we make contact, contact with on a daily basis and a weekly basis, as far as some of the illegal signers that they put out, some of the parking issues that they create. And they, when we have conversations with them, they're quick to, you know, take care of the problem. We are currently in conversation with FDOT, because that is a state road as far as appearance, but we're also in deeper conversations with FDOT as far as the general appearance of the interstate that runs through the city. They're very receptive, we're working with them. Yesterday was a, was a, a pretty good progressive meeting where the, the, the district maintenance engineer, which he's in charge of the interstates for this district, he came to the meeting. I had supervisors there from, from Code Enforcement, who also supervised the cleanup operation for the city, and they brought in their contractors, and everybody met, and we're all going to work together to try to make the appearance on Bush or any other state road or the interstate better. That's what we're working on. It's an ongoing project. Just in closing, I just want to say that Code Enforcement, it's, it's an important aspect of revitalization for any area. And I, and I cite one, in particular, an example, and Councilman Viera can attest to this, there was an abandoned China buffet on Fowler Avenue next to the World of Beer, and it became a huge issue. And, you know, homeless were taking over and damage was being done to the building, and we, we kept on that owner to do the right thing. And it took a while, but he did sell the property, and now there's a functioning Chick-fil-A. So we have to be, and we realize this, we have to be persistent, and that's my, that's my philosophy, is to be persistent with these businesses that, that may become a problem in appearance, and try to get them to do the right thing, and also work with the police so that everything's happening, to, to make the area better. So with that, if there's any questions, that's all I have.
And Councilman Gudes was going to go first, Councilman, and then, sure, okay, go ahead, sir.
I, I'd just like to know, when you mentioned the building on Bush, what happens if there is a, a cost of over a hundred thousand dollars to demolish? Does that lien put on the property, and the owner then has to pay us back? Or what's the long term? Even if they knock the building down, how do we secure the empty property?
So we, what happens is, is we're talking to this owner, so we'll see what comes out of this, okay? But it doesn't seem like he, he wants to do anything. But anyways, we, we, we would go ahead and do the demolition, we would bill that person, they would pay it, or they would not pay it, and if they don't pay it, we lien the property. And, and that lien would stay out there for, you know, twenty years. At some point, if it's sold, then it would have to be satisfied, but that would be, the legal department would get involved, and there may be some negotiations with that, but that's, that's the process.
All right. Is there any escape route? In other words, he doesn't sell, he gives it away? What happens then?
No, it doesn't escape from the demolition order.
All right, sir.
He can't escape from that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Councilman Gudes.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Sal, for your work. That grass issue has been taken care of that same day, sir. So thank you. We had to get on, make a phone call to some people. Ms. Moran was on the right track about the hundred and twenty-five thousand. Is that a straight company we already dealing with for this price, or would we possibly bid there for a cheaper price if we have to go that route? Or how is that normally worked?
No, that's, that's a contractor that's already bid for the contract in the city for demolitions, so based on his price per square foot, that, that would be the price to, to demolish that building.
All right, thank you. Thank you. And, oh, Councilman Strickland.
Sal, thank you again. Having been part of Code Enforcement as a magistrate, is this property in compliance now? Are there fines against this, this property on Bush Boulevard?
Yes, there is, sir. There's fines for his sign that's demolished that he never took down, so he's running a daily fine on that.
Do you know, do you know how much that, 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 that fine is per day?
Not offhand. No, I don't. He was-
So then, then let me ask this.
Yes.
Are we able to collect on any of those fines once it becomes, comes into compliance, which I doubt it will?
Well, there is a possibility of, of a foreclosure, I, depending on the amount of the fine and how long it's been running. That was something that we, we could talk to the, to the legal department about. We could proceed with a foreclosure and a demolition, and, and then we would, we would acquire the property at some point.
And, and I, I, I'm not speaking ill to Code Enforcement. Again, I was magistrate for Code Enforcement, I know how hard the officers work, and I'm not speaking ill toward any legal department of Tampa. But I have found after fines that I had put on properties that were reduced to next to nothing, so that those property owners could get out of paying those fines, and, and as a result, they were brought into compliance, and then we had a visual, repeat offenders that kept doing it over and over and over again. City of Tampa is not in, in the business of owning properties. And for us, for, for us, the City of Tampa to take over these properties because these people refuse to pay the fines, we get ourselves into a, a hole that we can't get out, and it's affecting neighborhoods, it's affecting people's lives, and, and I, we need, again, no offense to your department, we need to do a better job of, of collecting these fines so that, so that property owners know that the City of Tampa means business.
And I agree, I agree with you on that, but I will say this, in some of the negotiations that I know of, we, we, if it's a hard-cost lien, that means if, if it came out of the city budget to, you know, as far as an abatement or demolition, we're not inclined to, to negotiate those deals. I think what you're talking about is if it's a- I think what you're talking about is if it's a soft course lien and it's just a fine running out there, they're more, the, the legal department's more inclined to, to negotiate that. That's the distinction that I know of. As far as repeat offenders, the previous council gave us some tools that we're using that, you know, ultimately will get somebody in front of a Hillsborough County judge, and, but it takes time. So we're trying to do different things like that. I, I realize exactly what you're saying, and I think, I think there's, there's some merit to that. But I think that, that, you know, if we, if we stay the course and, and, and my position would be to go after some of these folks that, that do owe us money, I'm for that. So that's something that we're going to take up here. We've been talking about it, and we just, it's in the works.
Again, no offense to your department. You guys do a great job, and no offense to legal.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Miranda.
Thank you, Sal, again, and, and what I was going to ask you is for your recommendation. As you well know, the system is set up that we want the place brought up to standards, and the fines, another thing, they do, we do so because it was done. However, when you have repeated offenders, and maybe it'll change, but I'm asking for your recommendation to how to change it, because you're right there. You see what happens on a daily basis. We present the policies, but you enforce the policies, and you see it more than we do. Although I know that there's a lot of areas in this city that need a lot more attention than others. Code enforcement is a great thing, but Code Enforcement doesn't affect a lot of people, because when you live in a certain area, there are many, few, much more, fewer problems than there are when you live in certain other areas. That's be, trying to be politically correct, which is something I don't do too well. And what I'm asking is what's your recommendation? Like, if a building has been there for six months, and you give them three notices, and they keep fluffing you off, maybe the fine should be stopped. Maybe then you put a lien on it, and the property becomes city property. We sell it off, and we build affordable housing, something like that. I don't know what it is. But something's got to change, because what we've seen lately, and they're getting smarter, and sometimes they get good representation, and we lose one or two cases. But it just, that, I don't want to be hard on anybody, but I don't want anybody to be hard on us. It's a two-way street. And if you give us your recommendation, I, it certainly would help.
So, um, there, we're only, when, when we talk about repeat offenders that, that you're talking about, I think it's only about maybe 15 to 20% of the case, and I think out of that 15 to 20%, there might be 5% that we really need to get hardcore with. And I think that if we had some sort of, where we would just foreclose on the properties quicker, I think that's the way to go, and that, and then if you foreclose on that 5 to 10% that are really hardcore, the message gets out that we're not playing around anymore. And then on some of these other fines, what we'll do is, what, say, an individual gets a fine from a magistrate, we have to let that fine run for 90 days. After the 90th day, I, and, and I encourage my officers to start looking at this property again for repeat and, and hopefully chronic, where we can get it in front of a Hillsborough County judge. So that's, those two types of things that we're looking at, I think would, would, would go a long way in, in, in solving what you're talking about.
Councilman Gudes.
I see where Mr. Moran is going. I'm, I'm kind of on the slope with that, but when I look at areas, and we all know, there's certain areas that I see that we have given no attention to. And when I look at that, I look at some business owners who are trying to struggle every day, and they may not have the money to do some of these improvements at times to come up the code, or when the code changes. So my thing is, how do we help those people who are struggling to come up the code? If I go out and I find on a commercial corridor, and I've got a mom and pop who's been there for, for years, but they don't, they're just barely making it, they keep the doors open for the community. So how do I help them? Do, do, do we need to look at possibly changing the way our code money fines, who we do fine, to go into a fund? Instead of going into the general fund, going into a trust maybe, to where we look at housing? May we look at helping the, the small business owners? So I, I think maybe we need to look at how our code money, when we do get fined, versus going into a general fund. Maybe look at a trust to where other cities have found that code fines and money that's taken, for demolition, whatever, can go back into the community. And I think that's what code is about, helping to regenerate a community. Yes, you want to go in and clean it up, but some people just don't have it to do at times. So I think we may need to look in the future, or look at how our code money is spent, and how when we receive money, how can we have it to help the people in the communities that are suffering?
And, and let me just comment on that, because I, I don't want to, I don't want to make it sound like our code officers are out there heavy-handed. We do have conversations with folks. We do try to help when we can. But at some point, if we've gone through all that exercise, and we're not getting the results that we need to get, then we have to move on. But, but I do want to say that they are, they are sensitive to, to folks, you know, conditions economically and, and socially and, and all that. We try to, we try to factor that all in.
I understand that, Sal. I just think that, you know, and I know a lot of your coworkers, you, you, I've called you, and you're going out and do some things to help me out in, in my areas, and I really appreciate that. But I just think, you know, we still got to look beyond that as well, and start saying, hey, we, we got these repetitive problems, these issues, you know, Mr. John, he just can't do it. We keep going out there, and he tries to make it. How can we help Mr. John and Ms. Suzie? So that's what I'm, I'm looking at for the future.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And, and just to put in my two cents, I guess, if you will, I mean, I motioned for this workshop, because I've always seen Bush Boulevard as a corridor of neglect, and it's not neglect because of lack of work of your department, or our friends in TPD, or anybody. It's because I, I'm just going to be blunt. I think that Bush Boulevard, whenever it comes to monetary investments through local government, has been abandoned by local government, whenever it comes to giving it an, an option in the budget. I just don't think that it's always been something that's been favored. I grew up in Temple Terrace, so I know Bush Boulevard very, very well. I've seen the tremendous changes in Bush Boulevard over the last 25, 30 years, and they haven't been good changes. And it's not because of the good folks that live there. It's not because of the hard-working public servants that are dedicated to, to taking care of Bush Boulevard. It's because government policies have taken away the emphasis from neighborhoods like Bush Boulevard to other parts of our community. You know, people call Bush Boulevard potentially the corridor to the, the entertainment part of Tampa with Bush Gardens and Adventure Island. Again, I think it's a corridor of neglect, and I think that we can certainly do better. You know, a lot of folks talk about making Bush Boulevard into, you know, putting art on Bush Boulevard and all these things, and I, and I think that's a wonderful, wonderful thing down the road. But the reason I called this workshop is just to talk about basic issues of dignity. The right to not have, you know, your neighborhood dealing with a lot of crime, the, the right to have robust investments of Code Enforcement. The statistics we see with crashes on Bush Boulevard. Take a look at 2016, there were 252 crashes in the East Bush Boulevard, Nebraska Avenue, 50th Street area. 2017, 262. 2018, there was a drop to 191. I know FDOT is doing this study now that's going to be released in 2020 on speeding. I've always been an advocate for a lower speed limit on Bush Boulevard. That saves lives. I want to see a design that ultimately bring us there. But I think that this is the time for the City of Tampa to begin a conversation on how to reengage Bush Boulevard. We are seeing a very, very active presence there with a new civic association there that is bringing about 50, 60 people a month to the meetings, and I'm 100% supportive of that. So that's what this is about, is to make sure that Bush Boulevard is in the view of the administration, and is in the view of city council, and is in the view of the budget forthcoming. And, and let me ask you something, if I may. Whenever it comes to budgetary investments for Code Enforcement for the Bush area as well as North Tampa, with this year's proposed budgets, how, how is that affected? Is there an increase in that, staying the same, et cetera?
It's, it's the same right now, but I think it's sufficient with, with the folks, you know, with, with the stuff that we have. Now, one thing that I may look at, and, 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 uh, you know, the Chief of Staff has been very supportive over this, this one demolition, because that could, that could really crunch our budget right there. But they're willing to look at these issues and give me money as needed. So you, you, I, I think the investment's there.
Yes. I mean, I, I have asked for more money in the budget for Code Enforcement for this area. It's nothing, again, due to the work of your fine employees. Dave Dunbar does a great job in the Forest Hills area. Bruce Lucas, when he was a dedicated area, I did a, a ride along with both of them. They're both, you know, great individuals who are great public servants. But I think if you talk to the people there who are on the front lines of these issues, they want to see more monetary investments from the City of Tampa. As we know, Code Enforcement can make a big difference in these neighborhoods, these middle-of-the-middle-class, working-class neighborhoods. It can make all the difference in the world, which is why I've requested those funds. Councilman Citro, Councilman Carlson? How, Councilman Carlson hasn't spoken, if I may.
Thank you. I, I just want to let, Mr. Chairman, I want to let you know I'm I, I just want to let you know I'm behind you 100% on this.
Thank you, sir.
And I've said it before, you may disagree with what I'm going to say, but I did a lot of, before I began, got on city council, I did a lot of volunteer work with Mark Sharp's group up in that area. And what we realized is that, you know, I've done, I've mentioned this before, I've done a lot of work in Latin America, a lot of work in, around the world. Bush Gardens is our gateway to the world. It's not downtown. Millionaires and billionaires every day are going to Bush Gardens, and their sole impression of Tampa most of the time is Bush Boulevard and Fowler Avenue, because a lot of them are driving from Orlando, or they're driving from the beaches. So they, they don't see downtown. They don't see Hyde Park. They don't see all the other great amenities that we have. They just see Bush Boulevard and Fowler Avenue. And besides all the investment that might go, go on in that area, it's an economic development issue. And, and my understanding from the conversations that went on is the last administration was not interested, because it was not in downtown. And then, and then the city, the county was interested, but they wanted the, the city to participate in it. And I think we have, you know, mayor who's obviously interested in the rest of the city. We have a city council who's interested in the rest of the city, but it benefits all of us in every district, because if those, those investors from around the world are driving down Bush Boulevard and Fowler Avenue, and they see great potential in Tampa, they're going to invest here. They're going to bring their companies here, and, and that will benefit all of us. Thank you.
And well said, Councilman Carlson. I agree 110%. It's, this is an area that's been neglected for too long, and the signs that we get from this administration so far are positive in terms of their aspirations, and I want to continue to see that in, in forthcoming budgets. I think talks also on a CRA for the USF area will have a more than incidental positive effect in this area as well, and so I'm in agreement. Thank you, sir. Councilman Citro.
I, just off topic, Sal. If, if the city was flush with money, staffing in many departments, Parks and Recreation, TPD, Code Enforcement, permitting, inspection, if we were flush with cash, how many new inspectors would you like to have?
Right now, I'm up to speed. I have enough. We inherited the, before, before, under the last administration, we inherited five inspectors from, from Solid Waste, and we rolled them into a district. I was able, at that point, I was able to divide East Tampa into two districts to give, to give more coverage, and I have more flexibility with the extra folks there to kind of, if I need to, I can roll up to North, North of Bush, or I have some flexibility there, so I'm good, I'm good with folks right now.
Thanks, Sal.
Yep.
Thank you, sir. Anything else from council?
Thank you. All right.
Thank you, sir, for all your work. Sir.
Good morning, Council. Major Mike Baumseiser, new major of District Two. I'm here to talk to you about Bush Boulevard and the work TPD's been doing on there. You know, we, we've been focusing a lot on Bush Boulevard, and, and just for the record, I think we're on to a very optimistic outlook for Bush Boulevard. Fowler Avenue, as we know, in the past, has had issues, and if you look at Fowler, it's, it's coming along, and I think Bush Boulevard's the next area. We're going to start seeing changes. Last year, we created two, what we, what I call two quality-of-life officers. We gave them a truck, and what they do is, they look for areas that might be with dumping and blight or anything like that, and they work very well with Code Enforcement, and are very tight. And anytime we see any type of graffiti or anything pop up on Bush Boulevard, they're on it right away. They try to do, to see if we have any suspects. And within, I would say, hours, that usually that graffiti is taken down. I, I certainly believe that having the area look clean and look good does start revitalizing things, and, you know, I work there like I live there. I travel down Bush Boulevard every day, so I'm, I'm very pleased. Over the summer, we started focusing on hotel motels along Bush. There was about three or four that we started seeing crime a little heavier in there. Without getting into specific cases, we started doing the abatement process with, along with our CIB, our Intelligence Bureau. So we started putting together those, that process in place to start putting the business owners, those, those hotel motels on notice. The letters have been sent to at least three of them. Maybe one more is coming to let them know that we're on notice, that improvements need to come, and the abatement process will continue. Pulling some recent stats, we pulled some stats along Bush Boulevard, and I'm pleased to say that, you know, stats are one thing, but just, just looking at our projections from last year to this year, and projecting it out to the end of this year, we're looking at a possible 19% decrease in violent crime over there, so that just gives me an indicator that what we're doing is having a positive outlook on that area. And like I said, I think along with the work we're doing with council, with the mayor's office, Chief Dugan is, is way, is behind all the efforts we put on Bush Boulevard. I think the outlook is better. I don't know if you have any questions for me.
Any questions? Councilman Gudes.
We have several hotels on Bush Boulevard. And I knew that area very well, because we split that.
Yep.
20th and, and Bush, 21st and Bush. How many families would you say are living there, or transient? Just male, women, prostitution? How many, but how many families are in those hotels? Because when I drive, a lot of times I see a lot of family people in those hotels, so I, I think that might be.
Well, I, I think most of those hotels are built for, like, quick stays. They're not, they're not meant to be long-term stays. I believe some of them do have people that are staying there longer. I don't have the specific data of how many families are there at this point. But we do, you know, like I said, there are a few that's popped up where we start looking at the crime element of drugs and, and other types of quality-of-life type crimes in there, and that's what puts them on the radar for us, and then we start looking at the enforcement efforts in there. But to give you specific numbers, I don't have those with me, so.
I think for me, it is, uh, I see a lot of families there, a lot of people that get out of prison. It's a lot, so I know we're, we're cracking down on the, on the hotels, but we've got to find a plan for those, those families, or we've got to, what's the word I want to use? Get an aggressive approach on that, because I think that's a, a major hub of that problem down there as well. So, and that, it leads me back to, to, again, with code, sometimes a trust or something to where we can have money coming back to be able to help and, and do things we need to do. But thank you, Andy, for your service.
Thank you.
And, and Councilman, that may make for a good motion today, just saying. Councilman Carlson.
Thank you. I, I think this gets back to a systemic issue, too, and that we need to look at poverty throughout the city. Tampa has, among major cities in Florida, we have the second worst poverty rate, the, the second worst homeownership rate. And, and, and we do badly on almost every economic number. But, but we need to look at this systemically, because the city, in the last administration bragged about the West Bank development, but what happened is 1,200 families were displaced, and most of them, despite media reports, most of them moved to Suitcase City or to Brandon. And it, it may in the short term help the, the city's numbers by kicking out poor people or minorities, but if they mostly go to Suitcase City, which may be in the county instead of the city, it still affects our community, because it creates dense spatial segregation based on economics. And I think we need to look systemically at, at what we're doing in these areas to make sure we're providing more affordable housing, and that we're dispersing it throughout the city, so we don't create concentrations of poverty like we have maybe inadvertently this last time.
Anyone else? Yes, and I, I think something Councilman Gudes also said about some of these hotels, is I went there maybe about four months ago with Bruce Lucas, and afterwards I returned twice to just, just take a look through these hotels, and you know, there, there obviously are troubled issues there, but I find just from my own vision, this isn't anything statistically, but that, that the vast majority of the people who are staying there are people who are down and out, folks who are going through really tough times, and it's unfortunate that some of the bad actors there are ruining things for folks who are already taking a lot of hits in life, and are there because they're in unfortunate spots in life. So I, I thank you guys for the work you're doing in, in those hotels for sure, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys. And Councilman Dean Fowler.
I don't know who to ask this to, you, or Sal, or all of you. Do you guys have like a, a task force? I mean, I know Mark Sharp is doing stuff in terms of economic development and that sort of thing, but do you have a, like a task force where you're working closely together, not only with our city agencies, but with sister agencies, social, social agencies, county agencies, you know, that sort of thing?
Well, I, I can speak, like, with our quality-of-life officers, they're, they're trained on finding, uh, solutions to any type of problem, and they do, they do do referrals to outside agencies. Uh, we primarily work within the city departments to try to solve our problems, but if we do come across something like a homeless issue or something like that, we do have homeless liaison officers that we reach out to, they come, and they're, they're in touch with all kinds of social agencies with, outside the police department.
I mean, not, not to try and meeting, you know, meeting y'all, um, putting you in a lot of meetings or anything, I'm just wondering if any sort of structured type of, you know, quarterly meetings among all these agencies that are working those corridors might be, might be helpful.
Oh. I mean, we, we do meet with all the homeowners associations in there, and like I said, the homeless, uh, coalition, they meet regularly to talk about different things with our homeless liaisons, so they're, they are meeting regularly to talk about a lot of those issues, but...
Thank you. Councilman Gooz.
I see the new chief of staff is stuck in the back, so I know when he sneaks in, I know he's got, uh, got his mind twirling, so I, I can look for some good ideas from our new chief of staff, cause I know how he operates. Glad to see you, John Bennett.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay, uh, next, we, um, have, and anything else from TPD? Okay, thank you, gentlemen, have a great day. Um, okay, and next, I know we have Ms. Duncan here, Transportation. No. Oh, yeah. Uh, public comment is at the end. Yep. Go ahead.
James, can I comment?
With you.
We're still doing the presentation.
Good morning, city council members. Um, I have a little bit of information about some projects that we have, uh, adjacent, uh, intersecting Busch Boulevard. As you know, Busch Boulevard is a state road, and I do believe that there are at least one DOT representative here to speak about some things that are going on, on the corridor proper, so I don't know if you want to hear that first?
Sure. You know what, that's a good idea.
Okay.
Let's get DOT here, please.
Hi, uh, my name's, uh, Brian Short with the Florida Department of Transportation. Um, I was involved with, uh, West Busch Boulevard, and, and a few years ago, I did a study on East Busch Boulevard. Um, I have a lot of information more on the west one, since we just finished that recently, that corridor study. That was from Dale Mabry to Nebraska Avenue. Um, part of the study, we met with a lot of stakeholders, we met with the residents and, and other groups that were involved with, uh, life along Busch Boulevard. So, we gathered a lot of information, and we prepared some, uh, recommendations for improvements out there. Um, the study's pretty much wrapped up now, we've moved those, uh, into design now, so we have a design project that is currently scoping and, uh, incorporating a lot of the improvements that we have. And our, our traffic ops department has also been out there in advance of this new project to make some improvements out there with lighting and signage and other things, so, um, I give a brief overview of what's being expected on this next study, uh, if you want to hear some of that, I guess.
Sure, go for it.
So, out of the study, um, we brought that, uh, speed is an issue, there's a lot of crashes, as you mentioned before, um, so we've proposed, and they're trying to implement in this design, current design, uh, lowering the speed down to 35 miles an hour out there. Uh, making some additional engineering improvements to help, uh, manage that speed out there, uh, bearing some of the lanes, sections that have the two-way left-turn lane, mostly that's Armenia to North Boulevard, uh, we're putting in median with access for left turns in, through that area. Some other areas, west, closer to Dale Mabry to Armenia, we're, uh, proposing a, a median through there, too, to help some of the separation and slowing the speeds down. Uh, like I said, in advance, they've gone out and put some speed feedback signs on either side of Armenia Avenue. Um, TCO's gone through and done some lighting improvements, so we've have new LED lighting out there that increases the visibility greatly. Um, there's sidewalk gaps along Bush that we are dealing with on the south side, mostly near Rome Avenue, right in the middle of the area between Armenia and North Boulevard. Uh, working on those to acquire some right-of-way to fill in the sidewalk gaps, which are greatly needed. Um, on that, we're, we're pretty much just moving forward a lot of safety improvements and, uh, trying to address a lot of issues we had out there.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Councilman Maniscalco.
A few comments. I remember when I was a student at USF and taking Fletcher, or, you know, would be one of the roads, and how dangerous it was before the improvements were made, the crosswalks and whatnot. It was a, and I don't wanna call it a game, but when driving at night, the focus was to make sure that, you know, nobody running across the street, pushing a stroller, whatever it was, it was a disaster for pedestrians. Um, but we saw the improvements after the fact, and I think, uh, accidents or pedestrian fatalities up at, uh, Fletcher have been reduced to almost zero, or they're very, very low. So, putting improvements on Busch Boulevard, which has, already has, everything has been said, but, you know, it is the, a gateway into our city, so many people do go to Busch Gardens and whatnot. But what's interesting is Dale Mabry is so busy. Um, Florida Avenue through Seminole Heights, with new restaurants and businesses, has improved, you know, so much from car lots to restaurants and other, and other things. But Busch Boulevard being that it's such a wide corridor, um, has largely been ignored for, for I don't know how long. I mean, I know we approved a, um, uh, a big project right off the interstate there at 275 and Bush, which is gonna be great.
Right.
But as you, as you go down, and I use Bush a lot, um, it's, it's just like frozen in time. You know, you have a lot of vacant commercial storefronts, you have, uh, some touristy, uh, restaurant, you know, there's gonna be the, the IHOP, which caters to folks in hotels that are going to the, um, to the theme park, you know, Red Lobster, uh, Olive Garden, stuff like that. But beyond that, it's just, it should be hustling and bustling like a Dale Mabry, I mean, I don't, I don't understand why we don't have that economic growth. It's, it's stagnant until you get to Temple Terrace, and then there's a little more action, but, um, but that's really it, I'm glad to see that, you know, things are coming, but it, it's a long road ahead.
Anyone else? Thank you, sir, and I know we have four, uh, Fletcher-like crosswalks coming in 2020 from FDOT. I mean, what I always tell people is that, bottom line, from my view on safety on Busch Boulevard is, I want the, the folks who travel down Busch Boulevard to be given the same amount of respect as the folks who travel down Bay Shore. That's it, simple as that, 110%, that those lives matter just as much as the lives on Bay Shore, and I know you agree with that sentiment, and I want to see, uh, the, the budget allocations and the attention to Busch Boulevard, uh, to be the very same as the parts of our city, the whole folks who are no- more affluent, let's put it that way. Nothing against our dear friends on Bay Shore, I, I wish I could afford to live on Bay Shore. Uh, Councilman, do you have any?
No, 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 it's just...
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Duncan, anything else, ma'am?
Uh, I just had a few projects that the city's doing that will be intersecting Busch Boulevard, and I could share those with you very quickly. We are certainly interested in working with the department on any, um, aesthetic improvements that they may want to undertake, we can work, uh, in coordination with them. But just real quickly, we've got about four projects that will intersect Busch Boulevard, we've got one on Bogan Villa Avenue that will, uh, actually, we just completed that, um, from 30th to 46th Street with multi-use paths and sidewalks. We've got another project in design on 30th Street, it'll go from Yukon to Fowler Avenue, and we look forward to, uh, the construction of that next year. Uh, we've got one on 46th Street that is, um, gonna be a walk-bike improvement from Busch Boulevard to Fowler Avenue, that we'll be constructing next year as well. Another project on McKinley Drive from Busch Boulevard to Fowler, we've got a signing and marking project to improve, uh, and introduce some traffic calming in that section, and that is, design is starting on that next year. And also, we've got the DOT, um, hawkses are called, that you just heard about, that'll be coming in as well. So, a lot going on that's gonna be intersecting the, the corridor, as well as what DOT is doing on the corridor proper, and we'll be happy to continue to work with DOT in trying to improve the actual roadway aspect of Busch Boulevard.
Thank you, ma'am, any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Was anybody else here from staff who's supposed to speak here for this workshop? I want to make sure, before we go to public comment or any other... Councilman Carlson.
Just a clarifying question for Ms. Duncan or, or the DOT. Uh, we talked about Busch Boulevard being a gateway, um, and, and the one side of it comes through Temple Terrace. Um, uh, do you know, when, when people are coming from out of town, going to Busch Gardens, where are they mostly coming? Are they, are they coming from I-75 and weaving their way through, or are they going to 75?
I really don't know specifically, uh, I would imagine those main interstates are key points of entry for folks, um, traveling on Busch Boulevard to Busch Gardens, and I know there's the project, um, that TCO and, of the IP group, uh, and the city are working on for the I-275 Busch Boulevard interchange to do aesthetic lighting at that location, so, that has been identified as one of those gateway areas where a lot of visitors are coming in.
You know, Mr. Chairman, um, since I know this is a big issue for you, you, um, I would, I would welcome having Mark or his group come present that, too, if you want to do that at some point.
Yeah, of course, without a doubt, yeah.
If there's something...
And I know we have a representative here of Tampa Innovation, so...
Okay, sorry.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
And before we go to public comment, and I know there's some folks who want to speak on this issue, I just wanted to thank everybody here for their presentations, and again, uh, the reason I'm trying to forward this is because, uh, this is really the time to begin to focus aggressively with robust investments on Busch Boulevard. This is an area that is a gateway of neglect right now, and we can do so much better for this area, we can do so much better for this area, and it, it's, it's not gonna be something that's easy, it's gonna be something that is gonna be a heavy lift, a heavy lift for our neighborhoods, a heavy lift for our associations, a heavy lift monetarily, it's gonna require a lot of money, it is. Uh, but it's worth it, it's worth it, because this is an area that has seen over the last 25 years a real, uh, deterioration whenever it comes to the investments. The neighborhoods are strong there, but I want to see those investments. You know, it's funny, I, and y'all remember the Sea Wolf? Remember the Sea Wolf? Yeah, I used to go there, I remember it being fancy, but when, when I was eight years old, and McDonald's was fancy, so I don't, I don't know how fancy it was, but I remember looking up the address where the Sea Wolf was, and I believe, I believe there now is, is a pawn shop. Yeah, pawn shop within, and I'm sure it's a, a fine business, but again, it just shows you the difference that we've seen in Busch Boulevard over the last 25 years. Uh, it's been a real change, and I, and I want to, uh, see the city of Tampa take a coalition lead with the state, with the county, and beginning to really, really reverse that. Okay, so now we go forward to public comment, and item number three, uh, if you're planning on speaking, please stand up and, um, line up against the wall, and now is your time, three minutes a person.
Yes.
Yeah. Mr. Gray?
Yes, my name is Stanley Gray, I reside at 3020 West Harborview. I have comments on two different subjects, the first being, uh, what we just talked about on, on the Busch Avenue corridor. I don't know whether you're aware it or not, but the Urban League of Hillsborough County is gonna actually have its kickoff in October the 24th of this year. One of our missions, its stated task, is to help homeowners retain their properties, and I think that that would also include business owners. As a former vice chair of the Code Enforcement Board, I remember that the, that the charter of the Code Enforcement Board was more corrective than punitive. I would urge very strongly that the members of this council reach out to the, or, excuse me, reach their hands back out to the hand that's been reached to them, to help the Urban League with this, because that's, one of the things we want to do is have businesses as well as homeownership retained. Uh, my second comment is with TBAE. Uh, as an adult, I've lived all over this country, and one of the things I do when I move to a, a community, I try to find out about the whole community. Uh, fortunately or unfortunately, I live within a fairly confined axis, and most people would say that I'm fairly conservative. But one of the things I try to do is understand my community in whole, at, at, in whole. I think TB, TBAA, excuse me, TBAE does a very good job of explaining this community, and as our community continues to grow by leaps and bounds, I think that we would be doing ourselves a strong disavor, disfavor by not funding them, because they are an information provider to our community. I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, sir. And, uh, Mr. Gray, it's October 24th, is it, what, a kickoff, or...
Yes, sir, the kickoff, the release of the October the 24th, uh, it's gonna be at the airport, and you will be receiving...
Okay, I was gonna say that, please send us all invites.
You will be...
Thank you, sir. Oh, whoa, we'll try. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, um, good morning, everybody, my name is Chris Vella, I live at 33605 in Ebor City. I'm gonna focus on items number three, I actually had multiple items, and I'm just gonna kind of sum it all up. Um, I recently was over at the Independent Oversight Committee meeting earlier this week, and I can tell you that, um, it's, it was a very positive meeting, they're gonna be very open door, so that means that you all could always come up and work with staff for a plan for Busch Boulevard or other neighborhoods to get additional funding. The reason why I say this is because you have a lot of instruments...
Mr. Vella, I'm, I'm sorry, I would have to just stop. Just folks in the audience, please don't speak while other people are talking, we are running a meeting here, and please respect that, thank you. I apologize. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so, my point is, is that there's a lot of tools available for all of you all. The Planning Commission has this thing called the Health Atlas. The areas that we're talking about in Busch Boulevard, um, just primarily just around you, at University of South Florida, is a mental health issue. It's very unhappy, over 18% of adults over there, and this is in 2014, are depressed. Um, 30% of leisure time for, this is for activities, to exercise, to get to places, to parks, um, that, that's all they got, it's 30%, and, and that's spread out annually. So, they don't have that much opportunity to even work on their health, mental health issues. Their obesity is at 40%. Part of this is because it's a food desert out there, part of it's because we are relying on those Chick-fil-A's to bail out a serious problem. The asthma situation is at 12%, um, and around Busch Gardens, you can have up to 50% cancer risk. In fact, if you want to even take this further, imagine some of the endangered species in Busch Gardens, uh, inhaling much of these air particulates, and, um, that can be a danger to their own assets as well. Unemployment rates is significantly higher in this neighborhood, um, you know, we are, we need to look at land use, and I do agree with some of the comments here of how we can do apartment housing and rentals. We have to get away from that mindset, that homeownership isn't the ultimate definition of housing. We need to have choices, just like we have choices to get to places. So, um, I know a lot of people just want to have a roof over their head, and have a good, fresh start to, to be economically viable and, uh, have that opportunity. Um, we also need to work on substantial plans. What that is, is CSX, it runs parallel to Busch Boulevard. Uh, Hart is looking to do a transit-oriented development study at this, they just got $800,000, so was at that meeting. This is a perfect opportunity to partner with them and figure out a way how we can have TOD development along CSX. There is some property out there nearby, Pepsi, U-Lane, where the tracks intersect, you got some really, uh, deep recessed properties there that you could have some opportunities to do some affordable housing that's nearby, and we just need to really increase pedestrian access mobility to the university, university area, Busch Gardens area. Um, it is just so vital, and part of that, again, all of this information, sustainability, mental health, is on the Planning Commission, so work with those agencies, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Morning, my name's Robert Gonzalez, I'm from 3224 West Abdullah Street, zip code 33607. I'm here before my city council. I am not just Guido Mascalco's constituent, I believe I am the constituent of every single one up here, and I voted for a few of you up here in the last election. And I do vote, I want to stress, I do vote every single election since 1972, when Nixon ran against McCarthy. I vote national, state, and local elections. But I'm here to ask you to please reconsider funding for the Tampa Arts and Entertainment Network. Their name basically says it all, Tampa Bay Arts, they promote every facet of the art community throughout the city of Tampa. For education, as a graduate of Hillsborough High School, I can't stress anymore the value of the things that they do to provide a good, safe, round, all-around education for anybody who needs it. All the interns that they get there, they learn, it's invaluable, the information that All the interns that they get there, they learn, it's invaluable, the information that they learn. And when our mayor was campaigning for mayor, she said that she would be the mayor of the art community here in Tampa. She did not specify what type of art. She did not specify the location. So please reconsider funding for Tampa Bay Arts Entertainment Network. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir. Next, please. And I want to remind speakers, I know this isn't an issue for our next two speakers, but if you're going to be speaking during a workshop, please speak on the particular workshop item and not future workshops. Please. Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Good morning, chair and councilmen. My name is Eddie Burge. I'm with the Tampa Innovation Partnership, and I just want to thank you all for focusing your attention on the Bush Boulevard corridor. When the Tampa IP was created about seven years ago, I think neglected corridors like Fowler and Bush were a couple of the reasons that the organization was created. We look at it as untapped potential. There's a lot of potential in that area when you look at Bush Gardens and the VA Hospital and USF and all the good things going on up there, and then you look at some of these corridors that are holding the area back. A couple of you have mentioned four million people a year are visiting Bush Gardens, and a lot of them come away with the impression of what you see on Bush Boulevard. And the gentleman that spoke a couple of speakers ago talked about the importance of linking the area for pedestrians. And we think that the more people you have feeling safe enough to walk on the streets, the more eyes you have on the street, the less crime you're going to see, the safer it's going to be, and that's going to be good for the area. So I just wanted to thank you all for focusing on the Bush Boulevard corridor and let you all know that the Tampa Innovation Partnership wants to continue to work with you to improve that corridor. We have about 230 members, and we're at your service, and I look forward to continuing the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you. And our last speaker is our former colleague, Councilwoman Lisa Monteleone.
Good morning, councilmembers. Thank you for having this workshop. As many of you know, I doggedly worked this area because it is my own neighborhood.
And if you may, as a professional courtesy-
Lisa Monteleone, for the record. Is that what you're going to ask?
I said that.
Oh, okay. I thought I had to put it on the record.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. We'll give you four minutes as a professional courtesy.
Oh, well, thank you so much. I appreciate that. So Sal, Regirio, anybody in solid ways, they can all tell you had their cell phone numbers on speed dial. I would send them photographs of all of the illegal dumping that was going on in the neighborhood, the abandoned properties. We do have a high homeownership rate in Terrace Park, which is a good thing for us. However, during the downturn in the economy, companies came in, bought up tons of homes. I mean, we, our neighborhood was one of those that was focused on for companies to come in, buy up the houses, resell them to other companies, and now they are permanently rental housing. I did a panel discussion on this in Washington a couple of years ago. These companies have no intention of ever selling these homes. They are in this because they are in, they are security. These rentals are security. So thanks to the federal government, they were able to monetize rental income and hold those houses as collateral for securities that are traded on the open market. So that's an issue that faces us. However, that being said, most of the properties, even though they are rental, are well-kept. We have, police departments have said there's a 19% decrease in violent crime in our neighborhood. Well, 19% decrease is great, but what's the starting number? So it's a good trajectory to be going down, and I see a smile from Councilman Gudes because he knows exactly what I'm talking about. Several weeks ago, there was a homicide on my street, four houses down from me, while I was on my way to a neighborhood association meeting. It was drug-related. Many of the crimes that we see in our neighborhood are criminal on criminal. They're drug-related most often. So it's not that we're targeting innocent citizens. They're not breaking into cars, they're not, you know, breaking into houses. These aren't home invasions, nothing of that sort. But it's crime, it's criminal on criminal, and most of that, like I said, is drug-related. So I'd really love to have some help with that. But overall, our neighborhood has been stable, and that's why we haven't been outspoken in demanding things for our neighborhood, because it's peaceful, it's quiet. We have Tacoma Trail Park, which is beautiful. It can use some improvements. It's an underutilized park. We've got a five-acre lake in that park, so I did, I was fortunate for Parks and Rec to put a dock in there to facilitate people fishing there, which they do quite often. But it can, there is much improvement to be made in the park. But overall, as Chris Vella said earlier, you know, there's a systemic issue, and I think that land use is the best way often to approach the rehabilitation of a neighborhood. Don't laugh, but I went to the website today. I was told that our neighborhood, this is when I was sitting in your place, that our neighborhood in Terrace Park was next on the list after 40th Street for a community plan to be done. Because I had taken the initiative, engaged the Planning Commission, we did a community planning study just on my own. So on the website, 40th Street, if you look at the community planning process, all of the documents date from 2013. And the previous one before that, the initial plan for 40th Street was 2009. So with all of the focus that took place, Councilwoman Carlson, as you quickly point out, in West Tampa and in downtown, this area has been left behind. And Mark Sharp's group, the Innovation Place, I was vice chair of that, they really don't do anything that is south of Fowler Avenue. So I've got a long list, happy to meet with any and all of you at any time to talk about what I think really needs to be looked at, and that's the land use codes. Thank you.
Thank you, as always. Councilwoman Carlson.
Lisa, Councilwoman Monteleone. You have spent a lot, when you were a council member, you spent a lot of time talking to me about your area, and also you took me on tours, and so thank you for that. But if the, all for transportation money comes through like we think it will, I hope you will help us roll up our sleeves in looking at the neighborhoods around there. I'm sure my colleagues who represent that district will. But if we, right now, one of the things is we don't have a lot of money. But if we do have money and we can put sidewalks in and other amenities, please, let's work together and get that done.
Yeah, our, we are lacking sidewalks. I mean, as Chris pointed out, there aren't a lot of recreational opportunities in our neighborhood. Most, there are kids in my neighborhood that don't know that Tacoma Trail Park even exists, and it's multiple acres, like I said, with a five-acre lake. So that is a problem. Transportation-wise, I'll, you know, I did push for the Bogan V and some of the projects that Jean mentioned, so, you know, now they're finally coming to fruition. But we have a lot of truck and bus travel throughout our neighborhood because a USF bull runner runs through our neighborhood. I'm a bull. I'm really grateful for that. But it takes a big toll on the local roads that were never meant for that kind of traffic in our neighborhood. So transportation-wise, that's a problem, and connectivity with sidewalks and bike paths and things like that, so, thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. And I also see Mr. David Haye here. David, did you wish to speak on anything on this? Okay, just observing our greatness, great. And Mr. Bennett, John Bennett, I see you here. Did you, I know you obviously have a very, very, very busy day ahead of you as the chief of staff for the Castro administration. Is there anything you wanted to talk about on this issue? Or, because I, again, I know you have a lot of issues.
Thank you, chairman. Good morning, John Bennett.
What did he mean by that? He said you have a lot of issues, John.
Not so well-spoken.
To be defined, councilman. Again, good morning, John Bennett, chief of staff, city of Tampa. I'm glad to be back home, specifically on this topic. You know, I heard a correlation that resonated with me very well between Bay Shore and Bush Boulevard. I remember back in 2003, we had a really tragic incident where somebody was hit jogging down there and killed by a motorist. And it kicked off a task force, as was mentioned up here, to do things like traffic calming, engineering, all those kind of things. And the one thing I remember saying when that task force kicked off between the community and government and the neighborhoods and MacDill Air Force Base was that this should be an opportunity to build something that could be transplanted to any corridor inside the city, not just be used for this one incident. And I think sometimes as turnover happens, we forget that we build models that are designed to be repeatable for other neighborhoods. And I'm really excited to work with council, the community, our departments, to take Bush Boulevard to the next level and see what we can do. I will say, in a moment of pride coming off of 30 years of law enforcement, that one of the big foundations that we've laid is the reduction of crime. We're sitting well below the state average, well below the national average, well below city or size average, and that gives us a basis or a foundation to do all of the social enterprise that we need to do to make Bush Boulevard and other roads safe and vibrant and active. And talking about the other things in the social justice lane of working with key partnerships and co-producing government, I do know that there's weekly meetings about quality of life issues over and above crime issues, and extending those invitations to situational partners to hear some of the residual effects about displacing families over enforcement, what can we do for, you know, any type of emergency housing, transitional housing. All of those things are integrated. And I remember developing a lot of brochures when we're doing compliance work more than enforcement work, giving those brochures out to families to give them options they may not know about. So marketing is a big factor in this as well. So that would be my global comments on this issue.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay, anyone? Thank you very much. And I just want to say also, you know, we hear the term a lot redevelopment with Bush Boulevard and the surrounding areas. I like to call it reinvestment. Redevelopment often means that you push the people in the neighborhoods that are there out. The people are what make the community. I want to have reinvestment, which takes monetary investments from the city, not necessarily the negative aspects of redevelopment. I want the positive aspects of redevelopment, though. Okay, thank you very much. Next, we move to item number four, alcohol sales. And thank everybody who was here today on this item. Thank you.
Good morning, council. Krista Moore, Legal Department. I am here to speak with you on the alcohol sales hours. This is a copy of chapter 14. We amended this, some of the councilmembers will recall, we remembered, we had just amended this about a year or two ago and created a nice clean table to spell out which of the establishments that might sell alcohol can be open, as well as when those establishments are allowed to sell alcohol. The only change was the restaurants, to allow restaurants to open at 7:00 AM, although they cannot serve alcohol until 11:00 AM. That was the only change that was made, but this cleans it up and makes it a little bit easier for establishments to follow. So these are your chapter 14 alcohol standards. Some AB establishments have specific hours in their approvals. That is true throughout the history of AB approvals in the city of Tampa. But when they say chapter 14 hours, when they operate by the standard hours, these are the standard hours for those establishments.
Chair.
Yes, Mr. Councilman Dingfeller.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, I noticed that this was my motion, so I just thought I'd speak to it very quickly, and I don't want to belabor it because we have a long agenda today. It's come up in the past in numerous contexts, especially in the context of restaurants and bars that are adjacent to or in neighborhoods, that the hours of operation is something that is, becomes very controversial, especially when they come in to us for an AB permit or for a PD or rezoning or what have you, that involves the alcoholic license. And in those conversations and in speaking with legal counsel, it's like what we've done is, we've said, okay, this is our standard, and basically the standard says they can, you know, they can stay open till 3:00 AM unless we modify you otherwise, and it puts the burden on council to back them up, to, you know, we say, oh, you're adjacent to that neighborhood, the neighborhood doesn't want you open until midnight, and then we, and then the burden's on us and the community to push it back, which is often, in my opinion, a more difficult burden and really an inappropriate burden. What I might suggest, and again, I don't want to wrestle through this in great length today, but maybe ask legal to go back and think about it a little further with council's blessing, is that we consider pushing these hours back, let's say, till 11:00 PM on a weekday, midnight on a weekend, and let that be our community norm, okay? And then if somebody wants to say, hey, listen, I've got a restaurant that's out here in the middle of nowhere, has no impact on anybody, we'd like to stay open until 2:00 or 3:00 AM, then they could come in and justify staying open a little later with some sort of exception process. So that's where I'm coming from on this motion to ask staff to come today, and I'd welcome, you know, council's comments on that, and maybe I'd make a motion along those lines.
Any discussion from councilmembers? Councilmember Carlson.
You know, my constituents are, a lot of them are all around South Howard, and so a lot of the complaints have gone away in the last few years as the restaurant owners have tried to work with neighbors, but we still get a lot, I get lots of complaints. And then there are other areas, even Hyde Park Village has one place that has very loud sound certain times of the year. I liked Yoli's, Councilwoman Cappine's idea a couple of years ago that failed, which was instead of putting it in the, what do you call it, the property rights document, the plan, or whatever, the PD, instead of putting it there to say that you could stay open till 11:00 or 12:00, and then make the rest of it a business license so that you could regulate it, because if it's in the, if it passes on from owner to owner, you might have a benevolent owner now, but if it passes on to an owner in the future who disregards the law, then it's hard for us to rein it in. And it, and what we've, what I've found in being here is that it takes a lot of resources to have code enforcement and police go out and police these things. So if we had some other mechanism where we could hold a carrot and stick, it seems like that would, that would help us. If legal has an idea regarding that, I would love to hear it.
So one thing that we have done in recent years is we've added a special restaurant to the code. It's an SU1, so it doesn't come to city council. People can just get it administratively. And that limits the hours, I believe it's, and don't quote me, but I believe it's 11:00 PM on weeknights, and then Friday and Saturday nights it extends to 1:00 AM. And the, it incentivizes people to get that type of approval versus coming to city council and running the rest of the city council is going to say no. They can get this automatically extremely quickly, and they can go straight in. So that is something that city council has done previously, is incentivize people, and then it has restrictions on amplified sound as well. So that is something, that is a method that city council could use, is incentivize what you want to see, and then if they're coming to you, then they're making that justification, they're making that statement, they're trying to prove why their circumstances are unique and they should be allowed special dispensation. That does only tie to special restaurants, so you could create additional ones of those, you know, for a bar with limited hours or other types of establishments if council wanted to pursue that as well, just as a suggested avenue.
Just one follow-up before anybody watching panics. I understand that there are existing property rights, and I'm not suggesting that we would go back and take away anybody's property rights, but as we're, as people are asking for alcohol licenses in the future, if there's a way to handle it in the future, then I would be open to that.
Correct. And so a couple of things. Number one, it doesn't matter who the property owner is, these are tied only to the property, so the property owner, the operator for that particular restaurant is irrelevant. So that, these run with the land when they are approved, but also, we do have a lot of approvals out there that have very specific hours already in them, and that was one of the things that Councilwoman Cappine was always concerned about, because when you approve for a specific set of hours, then they have a vested right to that number of hours. Now, there are establishments that say chapter 14 hours. It is a little bit different question if you change chapter 14, if you can then take away some of those rights that they have in those hours. So that's a little bit different analysis, and you might be able to take some of those rights away. If you change chapter 14, a way to not necessarily get into that, you know, sticky area would be to incentivize what you want people to be doing and minimize those ones that are coming to you.
Thank you. Councilman Dingfeller.
Right, and Mr. Carlson, I appreciate you clarifying that. My goal in discussing this today was to deal mainly with prospectively restaurants, bars that are, you know, have yet to open, that would open in the future, like I said earlier, to put the burden on them, not only on this hour issue, but also, and somebody brought up a good point about the amplified music as well. I think that our norm and the default position should be, you know, no amplify, outdoor amplified music unless they ask for a waiver. amplified music unless they ask for a waiver, and then, and then that would, again, reverse the burden. Would you entertain a motion, or would we need to hear from the public on this issue, Mr. Shelby, before I make a motion?
If you take a, if you're going to make a motion, yes, I'd ask the public to have the opportunity to speak.
And before that, no, Councilman Citro had a comment, but we can do a motion. That's fine.
Which, whichever Councilman Dingfelder wants to do. Mine was just a comment to, if, a comment to Ms. Mora, and I agree with what Mr. Carlson said, and for the time I spent down here listening to ex, former Councilwoman Kepine saying, no amplified, no amplified, no amplified, no amplified, and we had to fall back on to that, I agree with what Councilman Dingfelder is saying. Why don't we have no amplified music, and if the restaurant or the bar wants something that's a waiver that they'll have to ask for? I'm also interested about distance between other alcohol sales places, schools, daycare centers. It seems like we have overlooked those for the years. Let's face it, if we had distance separation and we were adhering to that, half of the bars in Tampa would be closed down. So, I would also like, if we could, if you don't mind, Councilman Dingfelder, to go ahead and explore that also. Not that I want to close any bars and restaurants down, Duncan, you're wrong.
Yes, sir.
And, Mr. Chairman, and just members of council, when you refer to no amplified music, that's very specific, and as you know, in the course of your hearing, you sometimes have televisions or sports events outside as well. So, normally what we put in there at council's request is no amplified sound.
Correct.
Fine, no amplified sound.
So, procedurally, Mr. Shelby, are you suggesting we hear it from the public before I make a motion? Or you want me to make a motion before we vote on it?
That's normally council's rules with regard to workshops. If you're going to take any official action, allow the public to speak first.
Okay, okay. Anyone else here officially to speak on this item from the City of Tampa? Okay, we will move now to public comments, and item number four. If you have any comments, please come forward.
Counsel, Steve Michelini, as you know, I represent a number of folks that come before you for alcohol petitions, but I'm also the managing operator for the Soho Business Alliance, which represents 35 businesses all up and down South Howard. And I know that Kristin pointed out that you could apply for a special use, but you have to have waivers, and if you have any waivers, then you can't go through the special use criteria for administrative approval. Because, you know, most of these are conversions of existing restaurants or buildings, you cannot, mostly, for the most part, you cannot get a design exception, I mean, a special use one approval, because you have some type of waiver. It's either a distance waiver, or it's a parking waiver, or something like that. So, that doesn't, you might want to look when you're examining this to see about what waivers you're willing to accept under that process that has the more restrictive hours. And the second thing is that we did experience some growing pains along South Howard, but for the most part, I think that that has diminished significantly. We've had the noise ordinance go through that we met on. We have a member of the Neighborhood Association that meets regularly with us with the Soho Business Alliance, and so I think most of those issues, for the most part, have quieted down. And I would suggest that when you're looking at Chapter 14, if you're going to make amendments to the hours of operation, that you look at creating a separate category that vests, as the council has pointed out, that vests all of the places that have already gone through and said, we're going to be consistent with Chapter 14, and create perhaps a subcategory of 14A or something else. But when we do come before you, we do specify hours of operation, and the council had a very strong desire that we put on the plans that they'd be consistent with Chapter 14, whatever those hours were. And so, if you start looking at that, you need to consider that those are vested hours for these, all of these establishments. They're all over the city. Some of us put on the site plans consistent with Chapter 14, and we listed the hours of what they were, but not every site plan and not every petitioner did that. So, there's a, there's a lot of moving parts here. It is like one, one big water balloon. If you push on one side, it comes out somewhere else on the other side. But certainly another workshop in more detail would be, I think, warranted if we're going to make changes to the AB operating hours. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Anyone else here for public comment? Okay, Councilman Dingfelder, we got a motion, sir.
Yeah, I'd like to move to, to direct legal and working with the zoning staff and the community as well, any input from the community, to, to look at modifying, or at least creating a draft for us to take a look at in another workshop on modifying the Chapter 14 as related to the hours of operation, as we've discussed today, as well as the amplified sound issues, and in addition, as Mr. Citro, Councilman Citro requested, the separation distances.
Second. And do you have a date for that, sir?
I'd say about two months.
Counsel, Mr. Chairman, your October workshop is pretty full, and if you look at the calendar, normally because of the holidays, there are no workshops in November and December. Your first workshop day, it looks like, would be January 30th, if I'm correct.
What's with November? Just because of Thanksgiving?
Yes, normally, yes, between the Thanksgiving holiday and then the...
Maybe we could do it on the CRA day.
All right, let me ask you, can we do it as a, as a staff report? And we can get it in sooner?
Sure, sure.
Yeah. And Councilman Carlson.
That, that brings up another, another related point. I know that traditionally, we, it sounds like we don't have workshops in November and December, but we have a heavy agenda that we're trying to get through, and some things waiting till January can't wait. And is there, is, I don't know where the opportunity would be, but if there's any way we could add a workshop?
It's council's calendar, it's council's prerogative.
Why don't I finish this motion, Bill, and then we'll, we'll get to that, which is a good point, because it keeps coming up, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
But I'll, I'll just, Mr. Shelby, a staff report in, in October, what, give me a proposed date, about two months from now.
An October date would be, you have two meetings, you have the 3rd and the 17th.
17.
And you have, so far, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 staff reports on October 17.
I see on October 3rd, you only have one staff report.
All right, let's make it the 3rd.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, may I ask a question? Coming up with an ordinance with no substance is kind of difficult to do. You're saying we should do an ordinance, what do you want in that ordinance that's going to change? I think having a workshop or having us come back with some suggestions before we draft an ordinance, because you don't know what time limit you're looking for.
I'm okay with that, as sort of a draft, a draft of suggestions that might go in an ordinance, so I'll modify my motion along those lines.
Thank you.
Question with regard to land development coordination and their staff with regard to direction. I believe they would ask council to be specific as to what kind of recommendations relative to what that they are, what council is seeking, because there's really not been, and with all due respect, Mr. Dingfelder, but I don't believe there's been enough dialogue amongst council members to give direction to staff to give to Ms. Coyle, to have her come back and make suggestions out of whole cloth, because what you have now is, is a code that has been the subject of discussion, and with regard to specific changes, I believe staff would be looking for direction from council as to what to bring back.
Ms. Mora. Do you feel you have a decent sense of what this discussion has been to be able to create some alternatives for us working with Ms. Coyle?
I think we can make some very general suggestions with a lot of blanks probably that would need to be filled in.
Everybody comfortable with that?
And Councilman Carlson.
Just based on what I heard from the discussion, one would be what several of you said, that we would not automatically allow amplified sound, that that would be something that would be a waiver. So, that's something specific. Number, number two would be, we need to make this prospective, so for anyone who doesn't, anyone who's applying for alcohol rights in the future. Number three would be potentially limiting the hours that, tell me if I'm wrong, but an idea would be limiting the hours that would go into the plan by like 11:00 or 12:00, and then, and then having a business license or some other alternative beyond that. I don't know if there's consensus on that, but that's...
I think the business license, I'd be, I wasn't here, obviously, or around when Yoli was suggesting that, but I think that could be one of the alternatives that Ms. Mora could, or her successor could.
Maybe there are others that I don't know, but...
Any objections from council on the aforementioned principles? Councilman Miranda?
Thank you very much. I've been here for some period of time when some council members didn't want any alcohol at all. Then I've been on the flip side, where some council members wanted alcohol 24 hours a This has been an ongoing thing for the last 50 years this way. The problem is, not the alcohol, it is forever. When you give this license out, that piece of land is zoned alcohol forever. It doesn't change. So, name, you have other ideas. You look at one thing, some, I've been here with petitioners, I'm sure so have you, said, no, I don't want to be open at 3:00 in the morning, I want it till 1:00. And some have said, oh, no, no, we're going to tell you to 3:00, and you're going to tell us no, but it's going to be to 3:00. That's happened. Then I've had some that said, I want it to 3:00, and you say, oh, no, no, we can only give you the 1:00, because of all the opposition, and the opposition agreed to 1:00. Where in the hell are we? It ain't going to change a damn thing. So, now you go back and you say, well, let me understand this. I want zoning here, and I want it to 3:00, but I got 22 opposition bars or restaurants that already have it at 3:00, and they don't want me to have it. There's what we're at. It's not that simple. You may write all the ordinance that we want, we may litigate it for a long time. I think St. Pete's got this. You can only go to certain, then you've got to have points to go up. Well, how do you get points to come down? By how many times you get a ticket from a police officer, or at least a citation saying you're playing music when you're not supposed to, or you have a music permit but you're playing it too loud? Where does it end?
We do have the enforcement provisions, so when we have those cases where you do have a repeated noise ordinance violation, violation of their hours, you know, when you have a repeated violation, we do have provisions in our code to bring these back and consider whether to suspend, and after, for instances, city council can revoke. So, we do have that provision in our code as well, if that's something that council also wants to analyze.
And I believe there's only, of all my years of public service, maybe two that were closed. I know of one, but I'm going to say two.
It's rare.
Two, and they weren't for loud noise, it was for alcohol and other, other items that they were serving, other things and doing other things, you know, I'm not going to go into that. But, so I don't know how many zonings we have for alcohol zonings, but in 25 years, we have closed two. I guess that's a big number, so we got to change.
Councilman Carlson.
I don't know if this is what my colleague was suggesting, but is it possible to make them all business licenses or some kind of license that doesn't go with the property?
No.
No.
We had a court case on that.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
And, Mr. Chairman, and council, just a reminder that what you're dealing with, with hours of operation are in Chapter 14, and with things like distance separation and the like, that's in Chapter 27, and as you may recall, council's rules state that that's done on an annual, excuse me, semi-annual basis, and so when, when Cathy Coyle comes back, or land development comes back, it would have to fit in whatever it is into whatever cycle it's going to be presented.
One more thing, I'm sorry, I forgot one. It used to be you had to have so much parking within your confined area. However, when they didn't have enough parking, they leased a lot, a block or two blocks away, it was a 400, I forget what it was, a quarter of a mile distance, and smaller than that, you can apply for it. There's only one problem with that, and it's all fine and dandy, and I know it's well-intended, or I believe it's well-intended at times, all of a sudden, that lot is sold and is developed, but you got your license. What the world, not to say the word, hockey stick backwards, what the world do you do then? No matter if it's 3:00, or 1:00, or 12:00, or 11:00, what do you do then when you issued a license, and that lot's no longer there, and you can't go by what you agreed to, both parties? I'm not blaming all the petitioners, both parties, the petitioners and whoever sits on this chair, the council. What do you do then? Is there an answer for that?
So, it depends on whether they actually received a waiver, or whether they went through our code process for providing an additional lot. If they go through our code process for providing an additional lot, then if they lose the ability to have that lot, then they are underparked and they would be in code violation. It would take code enforcement going out there and citing them, but they would be in code violation. If they receive a waiver, there's nothing we can do.
All right. I'm not 100% positive, but I believe we've got some without the waivers, that that lot was going to be that. Do you know of any that have been closed, because the lot's been?
I'm, I'm not aware of one standing here today.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we have a motion to the floor by Councilman Dingfelder? Oh, I'm sorry, what, ma'am? Oh, go ahead.
Clarification of the motion. Okay, that we would seek a staff report of first meeting in October, I think it was the 3rd, to come back and provide us options as related to Chapter 14 and Chapter 27, specifically addressing hours of operation, the, what was the other one? The amplified outdoor sound, as well as distance separation.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder, or do we have a second? We have a second by Councilwoman Escau, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, just for the sake of time, point of order, item five, which was my motion, seconded by Mr. Carlson back in May, as related to resiliency. I've chatted with Chief of Staff yesterday about this, and I think if you're still in that position, Mr. Bennett, if you want a continuance on that till we get a sustainability officer and you guys have a plan, I'm okay with that, to put this off for another, for another day.
Okay.
But that's, that's up to council, obviously.
Can I say just, can I say there's some connection with that? I met with Terrence Sedia, who's with the Florida Center at the, you've got USAP, and she's just done a, maybe you all have been briefed on, but she's done a sustainability study for all of Tampa, in particular affects my district. I wonder if we could get her to present either at the same time or just before, so that we have that information and also the staff reports.
Mr. Bennett, when would you like, when would you like us to, or suggest that we might continue this item to, as related to the city's master planning on sustainability and resilience?
Sure. Again, John Bennett, good morning, Chief of Staff, City of Tampa. If I could kind of paint a global view, and then we can adjust accordingly together. So, as you know, when the, when the administration took office, the mayor kicked off five areas of transforming Tampa's tomorrow. One of those is sustainability and resiliency, which we need to do diligently, get recommendations in, not to mention the current state of the city, and also the memorandum of understanding, work with the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council. There's a lot of talent locally and beyond that can talk to this item, and we talk about sustainability as an impact and resiliency as how quick we bounce back, those two areas. But every single, every single advisory team that kicks off is a coalition of key personnel, both in the region, you know, from universities, all of the best practices, and so my suggestion would be to fill that advisory team with all the names that you're thinking of, and work together and unified, because the very first thing that happens is a current state presentation. It's open to the public, it's open to council, and that gives us the opportunity to work through this collectively and collaboratively, to figure out what the recommendations are for the city and possibly even the region, because of the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council's investment in this topic. That would be my suggestion. If council still prefers a specific focus on this, I would suggest, I mean, obviously we know we're in the peak of hurricane season right now, we're getting pulled a lot of different directions, but this is such an important topic that it is one of the five areas that the mayor, the mayor's administration is focused on. That is the fifth domain to kick off, the other four have kicked off, so that's why I'm thinking if we have specific names of people that can invest in this, that would be to pull them together into one group and let this go through, which council is obviously can be a part of through the way it's been designed. But again, if we want to have a workshop here, then I would argue that we get past, at least past October 1, because there's everything going on with the budget and other things, and quite honestly, we have to look at the other things that we can't predict right now, which is the balance of hurricane season, to make sure that we deliver a good, a good staff report.
Well, maybe an update status report in November, December is I'm comfortable with. And consistent with what Mr. Carlson said and what you said, John, I think we'd all be glad to provide you some names, including Taryn and her group, to participate in the mayor's transition teams.
Excellent. And I, I like that idea because I think by then, councilman, we will have that current state report, which is exactly what we're looking for, to give us a future state opportunity.
Are you suggesting that, that we just give names for the, for the mayor's transition committee, or should we set up something like charter review where we appoint people and mayor appoints people and they collectively come back with a report?
Well, right now, I only know of the forum of the advisory team. If there's another suggestion, then, you know, obviously we entertain it. Alls I'm trying to do is, is have a combination of time management, energy management, that is transparent and effective and delivers the right recommendations for the city.
This is, this is one of the questions that I get, besides scooters, I think, just about anything else. And one of the concerns is that we've increased stormwater rates and we're increasing maybe next week, water and wastewater rates. And my understanding from all the engineers around is that it, that those billions of dollars will be invested in, in dealing with the current state. But the people who are paying attention to sea level rise are very concerned because we're not investing in solutions that will be immune from sea level rise, like the baffles we're building for the, for the stormwater. Some experts have predicted to me that if, if sea levels continue to rise, that those baffles will be full or they won't be able to fill up. So I think it's important for us to be educated about, and all on the same page about what's happening, what predictions are. USF has just done this big study and maybe we could all get briefed individually or collectively. But there, there's this big issue that affects all the money that we're spending that we need to look at, and then there are a lot of smaller things.
Understood. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? Councilman Dingfelder?
So with that, I'll, I'll be glad to move this discussion, continue it to December. We have a regular meeting in December on the 5th, under staff reports.
All right. We have a motion from Councilman Dingfelder, second from Councilman Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody from the public wish to, I know, I know we're postponing this till really December, but anybody have any comment on item number five? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on to item number six. This was proposed by Councilmember Dingfelder regarding the possibility of impact fees or any similar measures as related to the city's utility program.
Well, and this is very germane. I actually thought it was going to be as part of tonight's agenda. So if we want to just continue this to tonight, when we're talking about water and wastewater, and then it would seem to jive better with impact fees, if everybody's comfortable with that.
Brad Beer, Public Works Administrator, if I could make a few comments that do segue into tonight, I'd appreciate that. So we have, as you know, been conducting four master plans for the water and wastewater systems and the $3.2 billion improvements over the last about three years, and have completed those master plans, and that's resulted in the, in the program we're proposing. In parallel with that, we have conducted a rate study. And that rate study had three components. It had a consumption, consumption rate component, a base charge component, and a fees and charges component. The first two items have been completed and have been incorporated into the funding proposal that we have presented at the community meetings and some of the other outreach that we've done. The third component of that, the fees and charges, was, we just received a draft of that yesterday. And so we, we haven't had a chance to digest that, obviously. And, but we want to, you know, digest the results of that and then obviously meet with the mayor and, and see what the recommendations are, if she supports all of those recommendations on all the fees and, and charges that are listed in there, and there are many. And, and then at that point, our next schedule, we actually have scheduled to come back to you to talk about this very issue on September 26. It's, it's on the docket for September 26.
But that's, isn't that the night that you're, or the day, isn't that the day or night that you're actually asking us to vote on a rate hike?
No, that would be September 5. That would be September 5. So, and so I say all that for, you know, it's been brought up that, you know, this part of the study would be related to growth. And I want to say that of the $3.2 billion, $300 million worth has, has a component associated with growth. The $300 million is, is not all for growth. It's growth, it's dealing with drought, and it's dealing with minimum flows on the Lower Hillsborough River. So, and, and later on tonight, the Water Department Director Chuck Weber will be getting into a lot of details on, on those items, specifically the drought and the minimum flow items, as considerations to the four alternatives that will be presented. And, you know, as you know, we presented them in a very quick, high-level way back in June. So tonight, we have a rather lengthy presentation that goes into those details quite a bit, and I, I think a lot will become clearer tonight.
Okay. Just one quick question, Mr. Chair. Yes?
Oh, yes, sir.
Thank you. So the report that we just received, or the draft we just received yesterday, does that include recommendations for impact fees?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
It does, and it, well, I haven't read it yet, but, so some of the fees may go down and some may go up.
And, all right, well, we, we can talk about it more later than.
Councilman Carlson?
Related to this issue, I attended three of the four public meetings and my aide attended all four. We heard, as you, you got the questions, but we heard lots of feedback, but the biggest feedback I heard was at Cyrus Green, where many community members were concerned about the, the subsidy for people below poverty line. And the concern there was that, the, the general description was that it would be for people who earn annually a third or less of the median income. And when that was calculated out, it was only about $12,000 a year, which, which means pretty severe poverty in, in our community. The community asked us to consider raising that. I would just personally ask you all, I think, I think Dennis and others heard that loud and clear, and maybe you all are considering already. If, if council would entertain a motion, I'd ask for a motion that we, that we ask you all to do that, too. I think you heard the message, but it, since we don't have much time, I bring that up because we only have a week until, until we're going to have a room full of people talking about this. And if we have that, that message to come back with, I think it will help a lot with the community concern.
Okay, thank you.
Should I entertain a motion, or you think that's sufficient?
So, the customer assistance program has been modeled after the hardship program in the stormwater improvement assessment. And that was also, the, the level of qualifications was also 30% of the average median income. And so that was the idea there is to, to model one program after the other. And.
So, so I, I would like to, if the chair will allow, I'd, I'd like to make a motion that we ask staff to consider raising the minimum income threshold for that subsidy.
Yes, sir. We have a motion. Do you wish to discuss it, or?
Well, if you want to discuss it, I mean, I don't think you want to discuss it.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Carlson, a second by Councilman Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, council, we move onward to item number seven, and now we have, yes, sir? Yes, sir, councilman?
It'll be almost 5 minutes to 12, or 10 minutes to 12. And if we start on this one, it takes an hour.
And I, and I was going to say that, which is we have a decision to make. I'll, for staff, I like to break for lunch at about 12:15, 12:20. I don't think we're going to get through it. So what is the pleasure of council? My suggestion would be that we break, yep, that we break for lunch and we come back at 1 o'clock, 12:45? What is the situation?
1 o'clock.
1 o'clock, councilman?
Just before we break, I have one serious concern I have, pardon, sir, as to storm. I know the Chief of Staff is here, so I would like to get that in right quick while the Chief of Staff is here.
Sure, no problem, sir.
He just left.
You're dealing with the storm, cook?
Yes, sir. My, my concern is this, I, I noticed I was at a joint meeting yesterday, and I noticed how the other entities are operating, and it seems like the, all the other elected officials were getting updates by the minute while they were at the meetings. And I'm just wondering, and I, I asked Councilman Niskalko, he was looking at his phone about the storm, and I said, well, I don't know why we're not, why don't we get, this council not getting updates? And he said, well, that's the way they're always done it here. And I, I have a problem that we've got a storm, I'm an elected official, I have a, a district that, that concerns, and we, as an elected body, we should be getting information, a reference to storms and any emergencies in this city, just like the other, the administration is, is working on. So I, I, I'm asking the Chief of Staff, look into that, because we need to be notified of what's going on as it relates to a storm, just like the administration is.
Mr. Goode?
And councilmember?
I hate to interfere, but I, I don't have my phone with me, but yesterday I received one, two, three, four items and one thing about the storm. I don't know if that's going to be ongoing.
Then I apologize in that because I had to go to T I M and fix my phone yesterday, but, because I wasn't getting anything. So maybe that was the issue, but I was just concerned.
You just showed it to me now. They're, they're doing it.
Okay.
But I, and I agree, I'm in 100% agreement with you.
And I'm not just saying for this issue here, I'm thinking when things do happen in the city, it's like we're the last to know at times. And I think when things happen in the city or in our districts, we should be notified immediately what's going on and not be, have to hear it on the news or hear it days later.
I'll, I'll check on that, because we, I get the updates as well as most of the people. There are four or five that come out a day, and what they do is they, they line those up, what the weather service has done, and then we get copies of those. You should be getting them. I'll verify that if you're not, that, make sure your names are on the list. But, but they do go citywide.
And, and I'm just saying, as far as any emergency that happens in the city, I think that we shouldn't be the last to know, have to see the news. We should be getting a call from someone, say, this is going on in your district, this is happening. And I'm just sitting by being baffled, I'm looking at all the elected officials, people are calling them on the phone, giving them updates of what's going on. And I just think, we just can't do things as we always done it. We have to look at new amount of ways to do things. And that's why I wanted to bring that attention to the Chief of Staff while he was here.
Mr. Chair?
Oh, yes, sir, councilman.
Very, very good point, Councilman Goode. On a, on a slightly procedural note, folks in, in Green have been very patient, and I'm just wondering when we come back, I'm just wondering if we could hear from them first.
I was actually with that. What I was going to do, Councilman Dingfelder, is ask, number one, and y'all be honest, is there anybody who is unable to be here for when we return to lunch because of a work schedule or something of that nature? So please raise your hands. I see no hands raised. Okay.
We're ready to win.
Just making sure. Okay. And yeah, I, I have no problem with that, sir, to have public comment on it first. That's fine. I have no problem. So just to gut y'all up there first, because y'all have been very patient. Thank you for that, Councilman Dingfelder. Mr. Bennett?
I heard part of it, and I'll walk back in. But Councilman Goode, I wanted to clarify anything you were concerned about.
Oh, I was just saying that, I, I was at a meeting yesterday, I was looking at all, all the other elected bodies, they've had people calling them, coming telling them minute to minute what's going on versus the storms. And I was talking to Councilman Niskalko about that, and he was saying that's the way they've always done things. And I'm like, well, I don't think that should be done that way anymore. I think when there's an emergency in the city or happens in a certain councilman's district, we should be notified right away, a phone call, a reference to know what's going on, and not to hear it on the news or wait a couple of days later. And I think we got to do things in, in a new model. I know you're the guy that kind of get, that likes new models and moves things forward. So in the future, I just like to see that, that we're notified right away and not waiting and hearing or constituents calling, and we've got no information to give.
Councilman Carlson?
No, just along those lines. Also, it's my first storm as a council member, and, and I don't, I don't know exactly what our role is. I know there was an email that went out to all employees, but it, there were, there are political ways that we can get involved in the community and, and do things. But if there's a specific role that we can do in all coordinating with the mayor and you, I would like to do that, so that we're not stepping all over each other.
And let, and before, if I may, let me say, I would encourage all council members also just to be in touch with the, the stakeholders in your communities, to reach out to disadvantage. I've reached out in my district to cross over church to leadership there and into Copeland Park. I just texted the, the gentleman who's the president of the Neighborhood Association there, just to, I guess, be aware of things. That's common sense. I know we're all doing that, but that mitigates the damage, I guess, to the extent there's any lack of communication, just potentially.
Mr. Chairman, you know, thank you for that comment, but, but we need that information. We don't have that information. So just because the administration may have it, this body needs to have, because we are the elected body. And the elected body should have just the right of that information. So we know, where's the E O C operation or unit that, where, you know, if something happens, what do we do? What do we meet as a body? What do, you know, these are the things we need to know. And I know that people always say, what's the way we've always done it? We just can't do that anymore. And me as an elected official in this body, I want a lot of it to happen anymore, to just go backwards and not going forward. But I, I know that you're, you're key on it, Mr. Bennett.
Yeah. I resonate with the future is now, not tomorrow. And we, we obviously are in a five-year cone of, of what we would call natural disaster intelligence right now, trying to, we're all trying to figure out between the best reports and the best information. You're speaking to my heart, because I called the county E O C and the state, the state yesterday to talk about this exact thing. So it's not just the tactical understanding of what's going on with, with Dorian right now. It's the strategic planning, how we communicate inside intra-governmental relationships. It had been my hope with the fact that most of you have been, or many of you have been in your seat longer, but as a collective council, that somehow you, within the 100 days in hurricane season, you had already had a briefing from the city's EM group about how things work. Those are the things that, you know, we need to progress towards to make sure everybody's on the same page. Yesterday's email was a chance to push the same information that we were getting to your respective chair, so you could talk to your constituents the same way we're talking to the rest of the cities from ours. So that was the first attempt to try and rightsize that. But I agree, we can always do better. It always comes down to relationships and communication. Everything will boil down to that. I'm working on that with the county right now, especially for the community that's the highest risk, transportation disadvantaged, homeless, special needs, pet friendly, all of those things I have out to the county to make sure that we're looking at that for, no matter what level of voluntary or mandatory evacuation that we might get in the city, and then of course, the reentry. But the two things that matter on this side of the equation are notifications and what level of evacuation we need to do. And that's the, the questions that we're working on. We've had two calls so far with the county, yesterday and, I'm sorry, the day before yesterday, and then yesterday, and we anticipate more of those to come. We will get this where it needs to be, and I agree with everything that's been said.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Okay. And I also wanted to salute Mr. Bennett. I just in my dealings with him, he's been a fine gentleman, just like your predecessor who's here, and you're very easy to work with. So we appreciate it, just like your predecessor.
He taught me everything I know.
There you go. Thank you. Okay, we stay in recess until 1 o'clock. Thank you.